Deb? Ready to go?
Jessie, I might turn you guys on.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the April 2nd, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting. Mayor Debbie Burtland. Will the city clerk please call roll?
Good evening. Mayor Debbie Burtland.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Saleem Nees.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Andrell.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Bassett. Councilmember Wendy Wyker. Councilmember David Wiesentiner. And Councilmember Benson Wong.
Here.
Great, thank you. So our first item of business as usual is to approve the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
First and second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes and the agenda is approved. We're going to start our evening tonight with a study session, Agenda Bill 5545, which is Parks 2019/2020 Major Projects Update. And for that, we are welcoming Parks and Recreation Director Jessie Bond and team?
Team, yes.
Okay, great.
Great segue. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council for carving out time tonight for this project update. Before I begin, since you referenced my colleague to the right, Paul West, little update on some restructuring and reorganizing we've done in our department. I think I copied some of you on an email today explaining that all the projects we're going to walk through tonight are actually mostly on Paul's plate. So his plate overfloweth. But actually, we've scaled back his responsibilities quite a bit. Up until about two months ago, Paul was also supervising park maintenance, supervising natural resources, and supervising park facility scheduling. Needless to say, he was pretty overextended. We have reorganized, and I'll just mention that Paul is now really focusing exclusively on park planning and capital projects. And Elaine Summergrin, Elaine's in the audience. We have also changed her position. She is now managing both park maintenance and natural resources, and we've combined those two teams for efficiency. So that's not the point of the presentation tonight, but I wanted to alert you that we've got some movement happening in our department. And I think it's for, it's all for a good cause and hopefully balance the workload a little bit. So with that, let's get started with some good news. You may remember, we spent an inordinate amount of time during the budget process debating what we were going to do with the prevailing wage rate increase. In August, Elle and I established a new prevailing wage rate, which affected our contracts, both the maintenance contract for city buildings and all of our open space contracts. It went from 1787 to 3767 with no notice. This was, and I won't get into the details, it had to do with new legislation that changed the way Elle and I rates were established. So we began working quickly, and Bo's here tonight. He was actually instrumental in preparing an argument for Elle and I to consider. AWC Association of Washington Cities actually took the lead on submitting an appeal to Elle and I on behalf of member cities. And we have some good news. Much sooner than we expected, Elle and I just issued an emergency rule establishing basically an entirely new rate. So I won't go into how all this works, but we now have a category called landscape maintenance. It's different than landscape construction, which was the previous category. Best way to describe it is there's a difference between mowing grass and installing grass now, which is incredibly beneficial to our maintenance contracts. So that is the good news. The challenge we ran into is we were already in process with our contracts. So what I will tell you is for the facility building maintenance contracts, we made the decision with legal counsel to reject the bids and go back out to bid. And we were able to do that because of where we were in the process. We had not awarded a contract yet. That is in process. We've got our bids back. They came in, I believe, under budget, the low bid. So that is a good news story. The open space maintenance contracts, it's also a good news story. We had already awarded the contracts, but for some reason, they had come in at or near prior year's levels. And I've had several people say, how did that happen when prevailing wage rates went up so high? I don't know. I don't know. I have some theories. But we, again, we were already in process. We'd awarded the contracts. We consulted with legal. There wasn't a good off-ramp to terminate them and rebid, so we decided to go forward because the budget impact was negligible. At this point going forward, anything else we bid for landscape maintenance will be at the lower prevailing wage rate. Now, I anticipate, because this was all done through emergency rulemaking and very fast, that in August, when they do another rate update, they could make an adjustment here. But I don't think it will be what we saw last year. So cross your fingers, but mostly a good news story. I also just have to put in a plug here. Association of Washington Cities and the Washington Recreation Parks Association did a massive, heavy lift on this for all of their members. And I know sometimes we wonder about the value of those membership benefits. This is one example of where our professional associations did a ton of work for us, work that we really didn't have time for. So my plug for those two great associations. Any questions on that? I know that was a long time ago and...
Thank you. I have one quick question. You mentioned that the budget impact is negligible. Do you happen to know what that is? And then, actually, there's two questions. So that's one question. And then the other one is that, to the extent we have signed contracts with the higher rate, what's the term of those contracts? Is it short-term?
We made the decision, because we didn't know this was going to happen, to bid everything for just a one-year period. The prevailing wage rate that they have to apply is the rate that's in effect at the time we issue the RFP or the RFB. So when we go out to bid, that's the date of that is the effect of the prevailing wage rate. Elaine is sitting behind me. I believe the delta on the budget impact is like a thousand, thousands of dollars. It's very small. But here's what I will note. Had we decided to terminate, we could have been on the hook for something that I will just loosely call mobilization costs, because we were just in infancy. There is a cost to getting up and started. So we could have actually had a net loss had we terminated. Going forward, we're in a much better position.
Question?
Yeah, thanks for that. That's helpful. When we bid this work and get the bids, what level of granularity are those at? Are they saying who they're going to put on the project and what they're going to pay them? Or is it more lump-summy? And would we want to see more detail?
So prevailing wage rates, there's a nuance here. Our contractors have to pay prevailing wages. It is their responsibility to do it. We cannot tell them how to do it, what they're paying, what the trades are that they're using. That is all their responsibility. So we require a couple things. At the time the contract is awarded, they have to provide us something that's called an intent to pay prevailing wages. That's our sort of checkbox that they've been in touch with Elle and I. They know they have to pay prevailing wages, and they're doing it. Throughout the project, they then submit an affidavit of wages paid. So this is proof that they are paying those wages. Again, we are not in a position, and we really, this can get quite complicated, to advise them on what trades. That's really Elle and I's job. And then you're speaking about lump-sum bidding or itemized bidding.
Right.
Do you want to talk about this? We do both?
Yeah, so the open space contracts are bid by both site and by task. So there is quite a bit of granularity. I mean, they, and then we usually, to analyze the bids, we actually use a square footage calculation based on those sub-items in each bid. So we've looked at, you know, that's how we made the comparison to last year, because, you know, last year's work was different than this year's work, but on a square footage basis, it's very comparable. So when, you know, say, we decide in the middle of the year contractor, we need to modify a job, we usually use some kind of square footage calculation based on the task and the site that they bid on.
Okay, thank you. Saleem?
So the vendor that you chose on this bid, is it the same vendor that won the bid in the previous term?
For the building maintenance contract, it was the same low bidder, the second round.
No, well, that wasn't awarded, right? That was pulled back?
Yeah, we rejected those bids.
But the work that was awarded was that?
Multiple contractors. So I may have to call Elaine up to help with this one. As Paul was just saying, when we bid the open space maintenance work, we actually award the contracts by park site. And people can bid on all of the sites or just a handful of them. So there have been multiple contracts awarded at this point. And some of the bidders are the same as they were last year. I don't know, do we have any new bidders? New low bids? No. Did that get to your question?
Well, the question was, did we award it to somebody that had previously held it? And I understand there's multiple contracts, multiple...
I am not able to answer that question specifically.
So for open space, open space were predominantly companies that worked for us previously. The facilities contract is a new contractor.
So council, we have approximately 45 minutes and lots of material. I'm sure, I mean, this is important stuff, but I just want to emphasize it. If we, you know, if we want to learn more about the bidding and contracting process, we can either do that electronically or we can have an additional study work session on it.
Happy to help. Let's move on to the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan Update, which we use the acronym PROS Plan. You've heard me talk about this quite a bit previously. This is, Councilmember Wong caught me on this, a standard strategic planning tool. It's not standard in terms of, it's not a canned approach. It's standard in terms of how it's formatted. And most government agencies that provide parks and recreation services have this type of plan because it is a qualification to apply for state grants. Our current plan was, is valid through the end of this year. It has to be updated every six years to maintain grant eligibility. We do have a gap year coming up. We will not have a plan in effect for 2020, and we will not be eligible to apply for grants at that time. We've been transparent about that, and that's okay with the way we're planning to apply for grants. So a couple things to highlight. This will include a statistically valid survey and a really robust community engagement process. Paul mentioned that the last time we did the plan update, it was kind of the light update. We didn't do wholesale changes. We are looking at kind of a major rewrite at this point. We need to revisit our level of service standards, you know, across the board. We are going to, and I'll talk about the schedule in just a minute, include a capital infrastructure assessment. We've done a lot of this work already, but we need a consultant to go out and take a look again about all the components in our parks, look at life cycles, and prepare some early cost estimates, planning-level cost estimates for us to consider. We're working towards a prioritized capital project list to inform future decisions. And we'll also be updating our goals and policies. Pretty heavy lift. So here's where we're at. We are getting ready to go out with an RFP to select a consultant. This is a substantial plan, and it is work that we need external horsepower to really get done and deliver. The capital infrastructure plan itself requires usually some architect and sometimes some engineering support as well. As I mentioned, I want to get that capital infrastructure assessment done this year. We will also kick off our community survey, hopefully by the end of 2019, and have early results rolling into 2020. Those first two touches are really important to inform that community discussion. At that point, beginning of 2020, we will be officially, you know, kicking off with the council and our new Parks Commission. Worth mentioning that this will really be carefully managed by the Parks Commission, but the Arts Council and the Open Space Conservancy Trust will also be at the table. I envision a number of joint meetings between those three boards in 19 and 2020. And we've already talked to the Open Space Trust about that. We're aiming for an end-of-2020 adoption. And I've already mentioned, we do have a gap year in 2020. Well, we will not be eligible to apply for grants. All right. Up next, ADA Transition Plan. This is, you know, I need to just fully disclose, there's no one on staff that has expertise on the full range of ADA planning. We all have bits that we work with in our profession. We are required as a city to have an ADA Transition Plan. We don't currently have one, so this is bringing us into compliance. This will largely be a consultant-driven project. It doesn't have a really robust community engagement process, although there will be some sort of a public meeting type of open house meeting scheduled at some point. One of the questions I had is, what is it? So automatically, we think about buildings and built structures and sidewalks and curb cuts and playgrounds. It is all of that. And we have to look at all of our city infrastructure as part of this plan. But the transition plan also has to touch on our services. The one that's easiest for me to explain is the website. You know, how does that function? Is it accessible? A look at our programs, other services we provide, meeting accessibility, and our policies. This is an area that I don't know as much about, but we've started looking at some of our neighbors' plans. And certainly, the consultant that we hire will have the expertise to guide us through this. This is a Parks and Public Works co-led effort. However, all of the departments will be touching this at some point, and we're aiming for an end-of-2020 adoption. It's a really big lift. You've heard me mention this before. The way we're doing ADA planning right now is like spot work. When we do a project, we figure out what we need to do. So what this will do is set out the long-range plan for ADA accommodations and updates, and then we can incorporate them into our projects as funding becomes available. The plan does not say, get it all done now. I want, to assure you, and the list will probably be long. All right, switching gears entirely, a quick update on the Aubrey Davis Park Master Plan. Several of you were at the February 28th open house. And it was really a great public meeting, I thought. We had our partners there, King County, Sound Transit, Four Culture. I noted we had probably more than 100 residents and some very enthusiastic conversations. So we have taken the feedback from that meeting and our survey and other meetings that we've held since then and used that to begin developing design alternatives. In fact, we spent last week a whole afternoon with our consultants walking through a number of options and preparing for a very important open house that's taking place April 23rd at the community center. If you're available to 10, that would be great. So I will tell you, we are going to roll out options. And it's complicated. It's complicated but exciting work. And so what I want to prepare you for is June 4th, we're going to be coming back to you to talk about key themes. We only have an hour. I can't possibly run through all the design alternatives at that meeting, but we're going to, you know, daylight to the council, some of the more complicated issues that we're wrestling with, and get your direction as we go on to preferred alternative. I spoke with our city manager this afternoon, and what I'd like to offer is to go out on site and do some walking tours with council members in preparation for that June 4th meeting, primarily focusing on the western lid area. That's where we're, I'll let the cat out of the bag, trying to separate bike trail pedestrian uses. It's quite complicated, and I think it will help you to see on the ground what some of the options are. So I will have Amanda in the city manager's office reach out, and we'll set those up. I will note, I live near that park. I walk my dog in the morning, so anyone that needs a pre-work early morning, I'm up for it. We are hopeful to have this master plan adopted by the end of the year. And I know it's certainly been a hot topic in the community, so I appreciate your support. And please continue to route questions to us.
Can I just interrupt and take a little bit of mayor privilege here? We had some early good news from Senator Wellman last week. Right now, it looks like there will be $500,000 for Aubrey Davis in the state budget. So that has yet to be confirmed. As you may further recall, we actually submitted a letter to WashDOT that stated if and when the Grassy Triangle next to Freshies was sold, that we would like to have that $2-plus million remitted back to the city in the form of capital improvement to Aubrey Davis. So no, we have not yet signed a purchase-sale agreement for that Grassy Triangle, but it looks like we're going to get $500,000 in the state budget. So hopefully, it's probably a small drop in the bucket, but I'd still like to think it's an important drop in the bucket. Yeah, Benson?
That is great news. I have a question regarding the April 23rd meeting. And so you can present design alternatives. And I guess the question is, with people, with the public viewing those design alternatives, is the plan to take that feedback back to the designers to perhaps modify things or not? I'm just trying to get an idea, what kind of input the public will have on the 23rd.
My first question is, will you be there?
I will be there.
Okay. So yes, we will have many options. If you've seen the plan boards, because this is an east-to-west park corridor that is massive, we've had everything in eight sections. We're going to consolidate down to maybe four broad sections and show two to three alternatives for each section of the park. Those are still being worked on right now. We want to get gut reactions. I know there are going to be some things people really love and some things folks don't like, and some things that are going to probably divide us, and we need to find common ground. We will take all of that input and the input from a survey that's going to open that night and run for, gosh, six weeks, and use that to start working on a preferred alternative. That June 4th City Council meeting, though, is a very important touch point because at that point, we are going to come and say, council, here's where we're at. Here's what we've heard. Here are the top three or four issues that are surfacing. We need some direction from you at this point. You also have a new Parks Commission appointed, and we are going to rapidly take them into this process as well to help with what I think will be a pretty heavy lift at those final stages. Yes, so yes, input's important. This is really a critical stage. This is where we actually put some meat on the bones and show what the potential is. All right, Paul's going to talk about Groveland.
Groveland Beach is wrapping up. We have the contractor out of there. As you know, the project is to repair the pier, the large pier, remove the small pier, create a small shoreline restoration in Pocket Beach at the north end of the park, and then install some wave attenuators to replace the wave skirting that was on the large pier, which was no longer allowed by Fish and Wildlife. So some of these improvements, you will not see. One thing you really won't see is the irrigation intake that's in the lake. Other than, you'll see the grass is green in the summer. So that's a new bonus, but that's almost all in the lake. The picture up there is the north shoreline. You can see it's quite a nice, broad gravel beach. There's probably less of it now because the lake levels come up, but that's a nice new amenity for park users. And the pier repairs are probably less obvious. You can see in this diagram, piling was spliced because there was rot in the piling. And then there's lots of cross bracing that's under the pier now that wasn't there before. And all that was custom welded for this pier. This is the third, I believe, third time there's been major repairs on this pier. It's the last time we can do this. This pier is going to last another 10 or 15 years, and then it has to go. There's no more life in it. The other feature was these wave attenuators. These are black polyethylene tubes that float just outside the large pier. And they are pulled down by elastic bands that are very, they're very substantial, and they reduce the wave heights that are coming into the swim area. So they reduce shoreline erosion and make it a more comfortable place for people to swim. And we're, the delay that we had in opening, we were originally going to open in February, but the delay was a result of finding more extensive rot than we had originally anticipated in our design. We had to change order that. Required some additional bracing and splicing. And then we're really trying to get the landscape in shape so that it really can be a, you know, look nice for the opening. And so we've redone the whole lawn in there and done some other things. Refinished benches. You know, that's ongoing work, just to make it, give it a facelift for this new part of its life. Okay.
All right. So opening May 25th, which I believe is Memorial Day weekend. You know, I'm going to be honest, we opted not to do ribbon cutting. The dock repairs, which really represented almost the bulk of the project cost, aren't even visible. And it felt awkward, to be candid, to cut a ribbon on a structure that looks exactly the same as it did two years ago. But we're really excited to reopen. Was there any, a question on Groveland? No, thank you. Clark Beach. So this is a project I wanted to get in front of you and make you aware of. It's a 2019, 20, potentially 2021 project. I'm assuming most of you have been out to Clark Beach at some point. We have a structure. It's a steel wall enclosure that was installed in 1972. It was, all of these beaches were hardened with docks and structures like this in the early '70s. We did a structural assessment on this and all of our docks in 2014. I think you're aware of that report. And the longevity of this sheet pile enclosure is, well, it's not long for this life. Let's put it that way. The style of construction, as you can imagine, particularly over that many years, is really detrimental to habitat. We've also, you know, we have sediment and fill that's built up in that enclosure, which is, you know, putting pressure on those sheet piles. So we are monitoring for separation. We don't want any of this to collapse. We're concerned about release of sediment into the lake. That would be bad. But also, we want to make sure it's not a potential hazard to our public. We're getting ready to figure out how to take this out. That's essentially what this project is, and how to mitigate for the removal. So Councilmember Wong asked some great questions on email today. The removal of the sheet pile structure is mitigation in and of itself. It will immediately impact habitat positively. And this is an area where juvenile salmon would likely return to if we appropriately address the shoreline. What we don't know how to do yet, and... What we don't know how to do yet and hadn't quite contemplated when this project was proposed is what to do with all that fill. It has to come out before we can take the sheet pile enclosure down. So we'll be working with consultants, skilled consultants, who can help us figure out how to do this. Also, I will just note in the picture, and where's the pointer? You can see where there's a cap, a cap rail. Oops. And it's fallen off. We are electing not to replace it at this point. It's really costly to do so. What we've done operationally is set a swim line inside that enclosure to try to prevent people from getting out next to the sheet pile wall. So this is a really interesting and unique project. Our team has never taken on something like this. This may be the only structure like this around, frankly. And we will be leaning heavily on our shoreline experts to help us navigate this project. I do think, I do think there, because of the habitat value of this project, there are potential partners out there. And we are going to start having those conversations now. It may also be eligible for some grant funding.
So I'm going to go ahead and ask a question. Should we operate then on the assumption that when this is removed, it is not being replaced? Because I've heard that there's a lot of challenges. There would be a lot of challenges even beyond the normal challenges in terms of permitting?
A structure like this would not even remotely be permissible in this day and age.
Okay, so just to set the expectations.
We didn't, we're not going to show it here tonight, but in, I think it was 2017, we set Timelapse cameras on this beach over the summer. And what I can tell you is, it's not as popular as Luther Burbank or Groveland by far. On warm days, we saw more traffic. I watched one of the 93 degree day videos this afternoon. And again, a couple dozen people moved through the beach. So I think what we need to do as part of the pros plan is think about what this beach becomes once the structure is out. It may still be appropriate to have a swim area designated by a swim line. It may be appropriate to have a float or a pier. Or maybe this becomes a more natural beach area and we focus our active recreation elsewhere. That decision is really to be determined. And I would point to your strategic plan for some of that conversation. Did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just want to say, I had the chance to talk to Greg Levinson, who's on the Marine Patrol, who grew up on Mercer Island. And he said, in fact, he confirmed that Clark Beach was a much more popular destination when he was a kid, that it was, it had a lot more activity at it and that the current level of activity is different than in previous years. So I think it's, I think it was probably in 1972 a totally appropriate improvement to make, given the time and the climate then and now. We have a different time and we have a different set of needs. And that's why you have a pros plan. You update the needs for parks through a pros plan.
Interesting. In the category of other duties as assigned, Paul went out with his wet suit and his GoPro on his head last week and dove this area so we could look at the foundation of the walls. So interesting fact on how we spend our planning manager's time.
It sounds cold. I think Lisa, you had a question and then Saleem?
I did, thank you. So who, what entities will be involved in permitting on this? And to the extent that grant funding is available, is that going to be negative impact because in 2020, we won't be able to apply for any? So will we be able to get grants in in 2019 or do we wait till 2021?
There's a salmon recovery grant through the state that is, an application is in 2019. It's this year. So that's the one we are targeting. Yes, if we have to apply in 2020, we're in trouble.
There may be, though, some grants that aren't tied to the Recreation and Conservation Office through the state.
If we go for RIAA8, for example, RIAA8 doesn't require a pros plan.
And then what entities are involved in permitting?
A long list.
Army Corps, Fish and Wildlife, DNR.
And the city.
City, yeah.
This is one of those projects and you have some familiarity after Groveland that will take easily a year to permit with all of those agencies involved.
Yeah, and we just, we've had a contact with another agency who's saying that Army Corps is taking a year now.
Thanks. Saleem?
So you touched on it, but I was going to ask, in the last grant round of RIAA8, did we apply or is this going to be something that's going to be future application?
We didn't apply for this. This is not on the four-year plan, so we need to get it on the four-year plan. And then, then I guess, I don't quite understand all the ins and outs of RIAA8 grants, but I think we have to be on the four-year plan to have a shot at applying.
Okay. So keep me updated on those applications.
Sure.
This project shows in our budget with the 2020 completion. I really think it's reasonable considering the permit logistics that will be into 2021. And I want to just say that now, which could then open up another round of grant opportunities down the road.
South Mercer Play Field. As you probably know, we have three baseball, softball fields that are back up onto each other at the south end of South Mercer. What happens is foul balls come over the backstop and into the spectators. In a normal, single field, that might be okay. But when you have foul balls coming from three different fields into a single spectator area, it makes it unpredictable where the foul balls are going to come from and who's going to get hit possibly. So even though our backstops meet current standards, we are proposing improvements to the backstops so that they can protect spectators better from foul balls. And this is something that Little League has asked for. And we've actually had many conversations with Little League over the years about doing something for this. Previous amounts of money that we tried to apply to this weren't sufficient to really give significant coverage to spectators. So this, this project envisions upgrading the posts, which are now at their maximum capacity, upgrading the posts that hold up the backstops and netting to a larger sized post that can hold taller or more expansive netting. And we don't know yet, there's no design yet on this. We have to get into a design process to decide what is the best use of the funding that we have to protect the spectators. So we, I can't tell you exactly what this is going to look like. Might be taller backstops, it might be netting over the spectators. It could be a combination of both.
It's worth mentioning, we have this issue at other fields. This site elevated to the top of the list because of the way the fields are configured. All the backstops are sort of backed onto one plaza area. As we explore the design option here, it also informs best practices that we may apply at other sites in the future, Homestead, Aubrey Davis, for example. This is also a really good project to point to that industry standards have changed. You might remember the old Little League fields that had these little miniscule backstops. Those are no more. When we build new athletic fields now, we have very robust backstops with expansive netting. And it doesn't matter if it's a Little League field or an adult men's baseball field. So we will be working through these safety improvements in our system for the long term.
Bruce?
Thank you. So I don't remember the details of it, but what I do remember is a conversation in which Bruce Fletcher was telling us there was a plan to put something in. And it was maybe a couple of years ago. And I just, I remember this in particular because I remember it being expensive and expansive compared to what I was imagining would solve the problem, which would be just to put some netting over the top. But I saw in the agenda bill that there's talk of hiring a consultant to evaluate this. And it begged for me the question of, has that work not already been done and perhaps lost someplace in the intervening time? Or is it now out of date? Or was it not really done and I just am misremembering?
I don't believe that design work was actually done. I think there were concepts explored. And the netting that you're talking about would, in theory, string from field to field. We know that is done in places. The challenge we have is you have to be able to carry a substantial load to install something like that, a heavy snow load. I also call it the teenage kid factor load. You know, what happens when kids, and they will figure out how to get up on top of that net, you have to put really expansive poles in. So we tend to not go that direction. It's still an option. What we would probably do instead, you can see how in this picture, the safety nets are going straight up and down. If we put in more robust poles, we would actually put a lip out over the field, which doesn't catch all of the balls, but it catches more than that straight up and down fence does. So back to your original point, I'm not aware that the design was done. There were concepts explored. And we are lucky in this area, we have a couple of really talented athletic field consultants that do this for a living and would come in and advise us on a best practice here. And certainly the most cost-effective one at that.
Wendy?
Man, they're consultants for everything.
We do.
I'm just curious, are you staying in contact with the Baseball Booster Club? Because I know they have pretty clear ideas about what they think works best and it's always good to work together than surprise people.
We just had that conversation that the primary users of these fields will be having that conversation with us.
Along the way, great, thank you. They might be able to bring some money too.
Good idea. All right.
So what we're calling the Luther Burbank Waterfront Plaza, you may not have heard it called that before, but in fact, to the, to the east of the boiler building and the restrooms down on the water at Luther Burbank is a paver plaza. And the pavers have become dislodged and are in need of repair. And that was mostly because we had a drainage system failure for a couple of winters running and water creeped under the pavers and dislodged them and actually caused some collapse of the pavers. Unfortunately, this happened in part around the Handsome Ballard art installation. We've repaired the drainage. That happened last fall, so water is handled. It's going to the lake where it's supposed to. But the ballards were exposed, their bases were exposed and we found out that the ballards need repair. So we've been working with the Arts Council and actually have contacted the original artist, who's coming out from Chimacum, to look at how best to repair these ballards. We need to repair the ballards before we can put the masonry back and put the pavers back and restore this. So we will be, we have a schematic plan right now. We're just waiting for the plan for the ballards. We need that plan in place to bid it and then we'll bid it and get it repaired this summer.
I'm not sure, have you actually seen these ballards? They're literally the hands that hold the chain. And on your agenda tonight is a budget carry forward request. And one of the items included to carry forward is 1% for arts. That funding is for this repair work. It's a project that we didn't get done last year. So just to address that.
Quick question, why are they called Handsome Ballards? Is it the hand, a play kind of on words?
Yeah. But you know what, we get to meet the artist in a few weeks, so we'll ask him.
Okay.
We're also going to do a video on this project and actually record the artist when he's here talking about the art piece. And so we have a record of the whole process of restoration. So we're pretty excited about that.
And then the Luther Burbank dock reconfiguration. There are 45-year-old docks, kind of the same vintage as Clark Beach. They're fixed pier docks so that they're too high for most boats that come into the area to wanting to use the park. There, we did a survey in 2018 and found out most of the people ask us in the waterfront are coming in small power boats and personal watercraft. I mean, not personal, hand paddled watercraft. And so we need, we basically need a different dock configuration. And we also can't use the piers for our sailing or kayaking programs. So we've actually installed floats, small floats, to support those programs. As a result, we went to a little bit of a design process where we created a conceptual layout. And I want to stress, this is just a concept. This is not a design. This is just like, what are some of the components that we would have in a future reconfigured waterfront? And one of the components would be just keep a piece of the dock that's already there because people love it for sunbathing and fishing. And, you know, it's already there, it just needs some repairs. We can do those repairs. We just don't want to repair every single part of the dock if we don't need that part of the dock. So then another component would be some kind of floating breakwater because we have waves that come from wake surfing and wakeboarding boats. This is a new development that I'm just learning about in the last 10 years, where you have these boats that have large tanks in them, that they fill the tanks with 500 gallons of water and drive to create a large wake that's surfable. While they're going up and down the East Channel, we're getting a lot more wave action than we used to. So some kind of breakwater, given that we still need to do coastal engineering, we'll figure out what we actually need, but some kind of breakwater may be in the plan. And then we need space for small power boats, which is the biggest user of the docks. And then some space for kayaks and paddleboards and other users that come in and different watercraft. So again, these are the components of a plan that will come together if we go forward with this project. The project would go forward if we get funding from the Boating Facilities Program, which we've applied for $173,000 from. The requirement of that is a 25% match from the city. So we're waiting to hear if we get that grant. If we do that, the design will happen in 2019 and 2020. We don't have any particular preconceived notion about the size of this facility. Likely to be smaller, it's unlikely to be bigger. We just need to have somebody help us estimate what is the need out there and what is the budget for that matter. The cost is going to be big. It's going to be two and a half to $3 million, maybe even more. But this is a great project for grant applications. Not in addition to the Boating Facilities Program, which covers small power boats. There's the BIG Program, which covers the big power boats. And there's other sources like Alea, which cover personal, you know, hand paddled watercraft. So a combination of grants. There's also grants for sewage pump out station if we decide to go that way. A lot of the cost for construction could be covered by multiple grant programs. So I don't want a cost to be a decisive factor at this point in design because we still have a lot of work to do on identifying sources of funding.
If I could just chime in here, I think everyone's blood pressure just went up when they saw the $3 million price tag. On top of all the other not so great news stories we've shared tonight, we always have a chicken and egg problem with grant projects. We do better in a grant process when we have a design and at least concept level planning estimates. We have a dock that's nearing the end of its useful life. We need to get the design done. We believe we can be pretty competitive in a number of grant rounds to fund this dock project. So that is the end game. It is not to ask you, council, to come up with $3 million. It is to position us to be competitive for these grants. This is a long life project, you know, easily four to six years, maybe longer. It could also be done, although we haven't figured this out yet, potentially in phases. So just want to caveat why we're doing the planning and design work now.
Benson?
So is the $173,000 grant, is that for design work?
That's just for design.
And then the 25% match, where's that coming from?
That's REIT.
Is that going to be from?
We have that in our budget.
It's already in the adopted budget, yeah.
Okay, great.
All right. Now that we've hit you with pictures of broken water structures, I will show a picture of a playground that's functioning quite well and newer and well-maintained. But mention again that we are in a, in terms of our capital projects, really frankly, a maintain and repair approach. We are prioritizing projects that have, you know, the highest safety concerns. That is how we're managing our priorities. We are falling short. And this is not a news to you that we could definitely use more funding. And as we approach the pros plan, it is with the intent of coming up with a long- And as we approach the Prose Plan, it is with the intent of coming up with a long-term infrastructure plan for our park system in alignment with communities' values and needs. So we have some really important conversations over the next two years, and we are looking forward to that planning work. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, are there any questions? Saleem?
So you said if we're kind of in a maintenance mode and we're not really out there looking for big new projects, if there are folks in the community that have that aspiration and they think that they can fully fund it, are we open to those types of projects? Do we have the capacity to do a community-funded project?
Absolutely, yes. What I will offer is, we did have a project come in shortly after I started last summer that needed us to provide engineering support and some other things, and we just didn't have the capacity to do that. So I would encourage, if you're talking to folks that are interested in funding a project, that we sit down and scope the project in its entirety. Our capital fund does not have any access in it at this time to even pick up, you know, engineering work. So yes, we would be happy to entertain those conversations. Let's have a meeting and talk about it.
Lisa?
Okay. I am not against baseball. I love baseball. Mariners are doing great, and I think the Little League fields are great. And I commend your desire to enhance spectator safety there. I think that's important. But my question is just, if it is not subpar at this point, not short of standards, or, you know, meeting requirements, is that the place to put the money right now when there are other things that are actually literally falling apart?
Good question. We have a lot of infrastructure that's not in great shape. The safety concerns we have at South Mercer Playfields are significant enough that we elevated that project in this annual budget. I will also tell you that we've made substantial investments at Island Crest Park, and that those baseball fields primarily support men's leagues. From an equity perspective, we also felt that we needed to make similar safety improvement investments at a field that primarily, well, not primarily, where the women's softball teams are also playing. Our investments have been imbalanced. But the foul balls are actually really problematic at that site. Not so much, though, at Homestead and Aubrey Davis. I think we can hold off on safety improvements there.
Thanks.
Okay, well, a big thank you, some big projects, big numbers, but I think it was important, not only for us, but of course for the public, to see what's in front of us in the years to come. I do want to remind everyone that we do have a new Parks Board that is being developed that I believe will kick off in June. I'm looking at Jessie, she's going to keep nodding, and then she's going to shake her head if I get it wrong. Those board applications are due May 3. It includes more than parks and rec. We'll touch on that again at the end of the meeting, but for those of you who have a particular passion and interest for the resources that we have here on the island, that would be a great opportunity to get involved.
Thank you.
So with that, again, a big thank you. We're going to go ahead and take just a short break before we reconvene at 7:00. Thanks. Okay. So we have just finished a special study session on parks and recreation. And now we're going to move into the regular part of our agenda. However, we have one special, special item of business, and as some of you know, we have a special, special item of business, it hasn't been put on the agenda. So it is actually with great pleasure that I let everybody know that before we move to the special business, that there are actually two people here tonight who have been greatly involved in the Mercer Island community since becoming residents in 2006. Their children went through Mercer Island Schools and have been involved in Voice, National Charity League, and high school sports. They are St. Monica's parishioners, regular donors to Mercer Island Youth and Family Services, and key donors to the Mercer Island Schools Foundation. In 2017, they opened a unique business, I think they're starting to understand why they might be here. In 2017, they opened a unique business in Town Center to expand their community support and involvement, and it has quickly become a place to meet, eat, drink, and be merry. So this is clearly, I think, a surprise to them, as much as many others, but it is a real pleasure to say that on behalf of the City Council, I'm pleased to present the 2018 Citizen of the Year Award to Lisa and Rhino Corucchio. So you have just, you have a few minutes to think about what you're going to say. And in the interim, I'm going to give the community a little bit more background and all the great works that you've done, and why it is that we were so excited to be able to vote and support this award. So give it about two minutes, three minutes, and then you'll be on. All right. So the Corucchiros created their state-of-art culinary event center, inspired by love of food, wine, film, and hospitality from all over the world. At Corucchio's, they host, create, and donate a five-course wine pair dinner for world-renowned film producers each year from the Seattle International Film Festival. They employ fair start employees, helping them, people with barriers, looking for employment to gain skills for a real career, a living wage career. They hire Mercer Island musicians for live music, particularly young people who would like a chance to perform. Prepare and donate 20 full Thanksgiving meals for Mercer Island Youth and Family Services. Support youth in schools on Mercer Island, offering a special rate for school organizations, including the Mercer Island Schools Foundation and Mercer Island Lacrosse. They create an inviting space for celebration of life events on Mercer Island, being mindful of the need to express emotion and heal while honoring a family's loved one by recreating favorite recipes and Skyping in relatives who cannot make the event. So one of the most popular events that I know I very much enjoyed are Wine Wednesdays, and they bring an average of, get this, 150 to 200 people together for food, wine, and live music. And we could do it on Tuesday nights, and we could broadcast the City Council meetings, too. Okay, so old and young connect and build relationships at community tables. Lisa cooks all day for the event, and Lisa and Rhino are happy to nurture our community and encourage people to build relationships and treasure them. They take pride in their event center and supporting the community. Lisa also makes homemade personalized dog biscuits every week at Corucchio's and donates 10% of the sales to Humane Society. They host events featuring Food Network celebrities and corporate clients such as Amazon and Microsoft, contributing to the vitality of Mercer Island. Excuse me. Lisa personally calls community members who she met at Corucchio's if they're sick and offers to make them chicken noodle soup. I have a feeling if you give out your telephone number tonight, your calls are going to go way up. They also take special care and interest of their senior friends across the street at Aljoya and know them by name. They make sure they always feel treated like royalty and are working on holding a regular event at Aljoya and Covenant Shores to have their own private outing event at Corucchio's monthly to socialize and enjoy food and wine. A quote on the Corucchio's website states, "Corucchio's is a life-passion project. Each and every detail at our culinary event center has been well-planned with love and care. Corucchio's truly captures our passion for bringing beautiful food and people together." So they are truly committed Mercer Island residents, win their breadth and depth of their support for people and the culture on this island, which is commendable and truly, truly appreciated. So with that, thank you, Lisa and Rhino, for creating this space to eat delicious food and spend time with each other on the island. And if you need a little more time, I'm sure there's some council members who would like to say something, or we can bring you up now if you've got your... All right, we're going to go ahead and give counsel a couple minutes to say a few words, and then we will get you up here. So I will start down at this end.
Okay, I get to go first. Lisa, thank you so much for doing what you do and doing it so well for so many people. I just adore your space, I adore what you do, I adore that you give back above and beyond what anyone can, should, and could do. You're just, you're a great friend, you're a great business person, and it's so fun to have a great place to go hang out with friends and come together and talk about all kinds of stuff. So thank you for doing what you do.
Yeah, what Wendy said. No, it's been just a pleasure getting to know you both and hosting an event there at your space. The space is so beautiful and so classy, and you guys are so warm and so welcoming. It's just been, it's a gem, and I'm proud to have you guys on the island and thrilled that you can be recognized by the community.
Benson?
I've been there a couple of times, and I'm just trying to figure out when I can host an event. And so the business model and concept is just fantastic, and I'm going to get there. And so I have a large enough family, I think I can probably have a family gathering there.
All right, Saleem?
Well, look, I'll echo those sentiments, too. I know when we had the discussion about Citizen of the Year and the list that evolved out of that and the conversations that we had about you and what you two had done, it was unanimously supported, and we all felt strongly about giving you the award this year. Now, I'm going to warn you that this is televised, and we have two or three million viewers in the area. And so we're known for a little thing called Mercer Island City Council bump. So you're going to probably up the dog biscuits, you're going to have to up the baking a little bit, Wine Wednesday might get a lot of control. Congratulations.
Bruce?
All right, I really don't have much more to add to that, but it's just a pleasure to know that there are folks in our community like you who are so community-minded and really trying to make us a better place, and thank you very much for what you do.
Well, I mean, I feel fortunate because I got to read so much of the greatness that was there, but, you know, when we had all that snow, Corucchio's was open. Cookies and hot chocolate, people had a place to go. The other thing that I will, it's a personal note, that's something I think I've shared with you, but I wanted to share with some others, is, you know, for many of you, you know I have a hearing impairment, I have a hearing device. And the first time I went into Corucchio's, I could hear, because of the thoughtful design that was in there. And I think there was some help from Suzanne Zar as well. And for me, as much as I've loved and enjoyed that wine and that food, I can also go in there and feel physically comfortable and engage in a way that I can't in many places, even in the greater Seattle environment. So for those of you who also might share some hearing loss or hearing impairment, I would also encourage you to go to Corucchio's, and it's a great place to be able to relax and enjoy great food, wine, and company. So with that, we have this microphone and this podium, and we would love to hear from you, and then we'd also love to get a photograph.
Well, thank you, oh my God. What an honor, honestly, what an honor. I mean, I'm a little speechless, but I mean, there's, this is beyond a business honor or money or anything, that you're valued, you know, what you do is valued in the community and that it makes a difference. Really, there's no, it's so fulfilling, and I'm honored, thank you. Oh my God, this is fantastic. And what a community.
Yeah, when we came out here, you know, 13 years ago, like many other people, we came out here because of the school system. We stayed because of the community. It really is the community that really drives us, and it's really because of such special people. And quite frankly, it's a little bit humbling, because there are hundreds of citizens of the years, including people in this room, who every day go in and they help out and that sort of thing. So to be included and to be recognized is very humbling at this point in time, because it feels we're just doing what feels very natural about this community, what really is all about, about Mercer Island. It's about getting together, it's about, we may have differences on how we do it or when we do it, but there's never a question about why we do it. We all share a love of this community and a love of this island, and so to be recognized for it is very special for us and really means a lot. So thank you very much for that.
Well, that's great. So we would love to get a picture, and there's nothing that comes from the city in this regard that doesn't come with a beautiful piece of crystal. So I don't know if this fits with your decor, but we would love to give this to you.
We'll make it work.
And counsel, should we get a picture with them?
Does it go with anything you have?
Okay, so we're going to have people stand for the, we're going to go here, and Katie, I think, from the Mercer Island border.
We'll be there as soon as counsel's over. Those are definitely the fun moments on City Council, so again, a big congratulations to the Corucchiros. Next on our agenda, we actually, we have another item of special business, which is Agenda Bill 5543, and it's a proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. We had hoped to have Youth and Family Services Director Cindy Goodwin. Unfortunately, at the last minute, she could not join us, but we welcome Ally Speets, who's going to give us a little bit of background and why we're commemorating the month accordingly.
Thank you. I love being the pinch hitter. I'm Ally Speets, Assistant to the City Manager, and tonight I am here to introduce to you Laughton Penn, who is the Vice President of the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center Board of Directors. She's also a Mercer Island resident, and she has been an employment lawyer with Davis Wright Tremaine for 24 years, advising employers on all aspects of the employment relationship, including employment agreements, disability accommodations, workplace investigations, and managing through the range of challenging personnel issues. We're very lucky to have you here tonight, and we'd like to invite you to come up.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation, and then if you wouldn't mind sharing a few words, maybe a little bit of a call to action to our fellow islanders. "So whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community in some way, whereas nationally, 1 in 5 children under 18 are sexually abused, whereas in Washington State, 45% of women and 22% of men report having experienced sexual violence in their lifetimes, and whereas of the 4,888 individuals served by King County Sexual Assault Resource Center in 2018, half were children. Whereas the risk of even higher, sorry, the risk is even higher for people of color, refugees, immigrants, LGBTQ, and other marginalized community members, one recent study shows that 94% of Native American women in Seattle report they have been sexually assaulted. Whereas the National SAM 2019 theme is "I Ask," which encourages and empowers everyone, no matter the scenario, to ask for consent, listen, and accept answers without pressuring or coercing each other. Whereas negative impacts of sexual violence trauma on women, men, children, and youth include fear, concern for..." include fear, concern for safety, symptoms of post-traumatic stress disorder, injury, and missed work or school. And whereas working together to educate our community about sexual violence, supporting survivors when they come forward, speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions, and engaging in best-practice sexual violence prevention work helps to end sexual violence. Now, therefore, I, Debbie Burtland, Mayor of the City of Mercer Island, do hereby proclaim 20, or sorry, April 2019, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Mercer Island, and encourage all to join as advocates in communities across King County in taking action to prevent sexual violence by standing with survivors. Together, we commit to a safer future for all children, young people, adults, and families in our community.
Thank you. So, thank you so much, Council members, Mayor Burtland. I've been living on the island for 20 years, have four daughters, three of them are at the high school, and have been involved in some way with CASEARC for over 20 years. And through that journey, it's been interesting to watch how CASEARC has gone from ending the silence, bringing sexual assault out of the shadows, to now the theme is "Be Loud", Be Loud. CASEARC's been around for 40 years, it's a nonprofit organization that operates a rape hotline and provides incredible services to survivors of sexual assault. Last year, it may not be a surprise, with hashtag Me Too, there were 20% more calls to the line and 20% more individuals that CASEARC was able to serve, so 5,000 people, and that includes Mercer Island residents as well. To the numbers that Mayor Burtland mentioned, a half of those who were served by CASEARC were children. It's pretty jolting to go to the offices and see the little chairs and the coloring books in the lobby. But what's also super interesting is how many individuals are finding strength and courage to disclose their abuse, whether it happened recently or years ago, and one of the things that was pretty powerful is how many individuals in their 80s called during the past year simply to say, "I've never told anyone, I've been silent my whole life, and I just need you to know, I want a voice." And it's amazing to watch the healing that can occur. Sexual violence, we can end it. We all have a role. It was recently at our fundraising breakfast, there were 1,000 people in the room, and one of the questions was, "Stand if you know someone who's been a victim of sexual violence." Every single person in the room stood up. It's everywhere, it is part of our community. So, it's really important to raise awareness, to have these proclamations, to really take a stand as a community to say, "We wanna know about it, we can't talk about it unless it's on the table." I wish Mercer Island Youth and Family Services was here, they're a wonderful organization that we partner with, but rise, you know, coming together, saying that your story matters, your voice will be heard, and we're here to help is just critical. So, thank you, Council members, for joining in this, for making it a proclamation, devoting time at your meeting tonight, and having me here, and I hope I'll see you again next year as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So, before we move on to appearances tonight, I wanted, and this is gonna be a hard one for me. I wanted to take a moment to remember Myra Lupton. As many of you know, Myra passed away Sunday night. But she left behind a legacy of informed, passionate, and important citizen input and activity. Myra retired from teaching English in January of 1992 after 31 years with the Bellevue School District, and she and her late husband Homer enjoyed their retirement years being active in numerous civic committees on Mercer Island, including the local chapter of League of Women Voters. Myra was voted as the City Council's Citizen of the Year in 2013, or sorry, 2003, for being involved in citizen, being an involved citizen in every sense of the word, and I apologize, as I said, it's very emotional for me. Former Mayor Allen Merkel said, "She's one person who's been able to praise and criticize in one breath, and we feel good about both." Myra and Homer had a passion for sailing and teaching youth how to sail. She encouraged Council numerous times to start a handkerchief fleet at Luther Burbank. In 2009, her dream became a reality when the city sponsored sailing classes in the summer, with each week filled and a waiting list of kids wanting to learn how to tack, jibe, and come about. In 2013, the Mercer Island Youth and Family Services Foundation gave the Outstanding Ambassador Award to Myra for her involvement in the community at all levels, exemplifying what it means to be a community volunteer and an island resident. Myra and Homer moved to Al Joya several years ago, she quickly became the resident expert on all things civic. I don't know how many of us have visited her there at Al Joya, it was always a lively conversation. She was the last Mercer Island resident to receive a paper council packet for each meeting, which she shared with other residents to make sure that they were informed about city issues and programs. Last May, we celebrated Myra's 90th birthday with a party at Luther Burbank. The sun was shining and Myra was shining. It was a wonderful celebration, which I'm so glad we were able to have, of such a special person. So, we grieve the loss of a stand-up and standout resident. Myra, we will miss you, your typewritten comments to the city, your very short but sweet phone calls, and your dedication to our community. So, our hearts go out to Myra's family tonight, and Council have a card for us. So, at the end, we have three roses. There's one for the citizens who have served this community so well, there is one for the couple who's just awarded Citizens of the Year, and a third for those that I'm sure will be coming, and there's so many potential wonderful candidates for Citizen of the Year in the future. So, I hope that you will join me in wishing Myra's family the best. She'll be missed, and I suspect she will also live on in all our spirits. So, I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything, but here's to Myra. Myself together. And we're gonna move on to appearances, and this is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the City Council on any item. When it is your turn to address the Council, please be sure to speak audibly into the podium microphone, state your name and city residence for the record, and limit your comment to three minutes. The expanded rules are on the back door if you need them. We do have one person that we are gonna go ahead and give the first time slot to, and then we'll ask the rest of you who have signed up to please follow Jody Chris. So, welcome, Jody.
Thank you for having me. I'm here tonight in my capacity as the President of the Mercer Island Youth and Family Services Foundation. As you know, in the wake of the Prop 1 outcome, the foundation is in partnership with the city in funding YFS services, and we felt it important immediately at that time as a foundation to commit funding for the 50% of the geriatric specialist's commitment or position that unfortunately had to be reduced in the wake of that outcome. We tabled for further study the foundation's ability to be able to raise funds to backfill some of the other positions, hoping to create a long-term, sustainable funding solution for the mental health counselors in schools, which we know to be broadly supported in this community and a real treasured resource for all of our children and families. We took the time to assemble a group of citizens across other nonprofits and individuals with interest to try to begin to talk to our neighbors and friends to discern appetite and try to brainstorm about some ideas. That process, as all processes do, take a long time, and we know that your process in reformatting your budgets and your financial situation going forward takes time. We do feel, given our strong feeling that the mental health counselors in schools are a treasure that we are not ready to get rid of at this point, we have partnered with the Schools Foundation, we, the YFS Foundation, have partnered with the Schools Foundation, and we are prepared to commit the funding to restore the position that would otherwise be cut for the duration of the 2019-2020 school year. We hope that will give us time to work more with the community, to come up with some creative solutions, and really have some good, solid data to propose a full-time solution that can go onward to keep these services in place for the health of our children. We appreciate the Council and many of the Council member sentiments that have been proposed in public settings where we know that there is support where you would like to try to join that two-way partnership with us. We know that your budgeting process has not exhausted itself yet. We invite you to join us if you can, but we felt that it was important at this time where we were facing potential attrition of some of our experienced counselors, that it was important for us to make this commitment now. So, Penny Yentus could not be here tonight, but on behalf of Schools Foundation and the YFS Foundation, we wanted to release this public announcement and hope that it settles some nerves in some parents and some teachers and some administrators. Thank you.
Thank you, and yes, I think Benson is right in terms of applause, that is a tremendous statement, and again, I would just reemphasize to anybody who's watching, what immense, what an immensely amazing community that we have, and we've seen so many examples of it this evening. I know that many people have in mind the question, "So, what happens next?", you know, "How do we move this forward?" What I would like to lay out is just a very short timeline and some key milestones that we'll be working toward. On April 16th, the Council will be receiving the fiscal sustainability plan strategies and scenarios from management partners, so that is an important first step. The second one being, on April 30th, staff will be presenting a comprehensive overview of the Youth and Family Services funding. So, once we've had time to work our way through those two very important processes, you know, material information, conversations, dialogue, we feel that we'll be ready to be in touch with the coalition and understand how we can go forward and be practical, tactical, and actually see how to make this happen. So, that's the path forward for Council, for the public, and of course, a tremendous thank you to you, the Youth and Family Services Foundation, of course, to the Schools Foundation, and everybody who's been participating to try not only to come up with a bridge solution, but of course, for a longer-term, sustainable solution, so, thank you. So, with that, we now open to regular appearances. Deb, do we have people signed up?
We have two mayor, Dwight Schaefer, and I do apologize, I can't read the third signature. So, there is a third person that wanted to speak.
Okay, great. So, if you'd like to go ahead and line up if you've signed up, or you would just like to speak in general. Anyone for public appearances? I'm about to close them, come on down. Okay. Great, welcome.
I'm Trevor Reed, I'm a, I have to give my address, right?
Your name, your address if you'd like to.
Okay, well, I live on the South End. I'm a lifetime resident, I'm a, and I wanna comment about the update of the transit plan, the forthcoming light rail, as well as the Audrey Davis Park, and how those three facets can combine. I'm a transportation planner, and I work on traffic analytics, so I spend my day analyzing congestion. Just looking at the 41st Street rebuild and the implementation of sidewalks there brought to my attention what a missed opportunity that was, and how the city can adopt policies going forward and standards of best practice that can create safer roadways for all users, as well as providing alternatives to motor vehicles. One area of prioritization that that should be is safe routes to schools. The facility on 41st, running by Northwood, is not, it does not meet all ages, all abilities, which is the standard that typically you use in a school zone. So, going forward, I think that that should be a standard, that all ages, all abilities is standard adopted in school zones in order to promote use and safety, as well as there should be considerations given to implementing narrower lanes and make the facilities match, you know, the neighborhoods. There's no point on Mercer Island that island crest should be four lanes in all likelihood. Heading southbound, you have a forced merge zone, and the increased lanes there don't provide any volume benefits. Sorry, that's getting a little bit more technical than perhaps it hoped. Going forward, the city should look at adopting NACTO guidelines, as well as complete streets. These are industry-standard best practices and likely a deviation from what are the ASHTO Green Book standards, which I believe is what the city's been using up to this point. So, as we go forward with the long-term plan and sound transits, the forthcoming light rail is really critical that we get these infrastructure investments right in order to make it accessible to all users and really provide the greatest benefit to the community going forward. So, that's all I got. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yeah?
May I just get the acronyms, NACTO and ASHTO?
Oh, I'm sorry, I've spent the day in spreadsheets. NACTO is the North American, or, I'm sorry, National Association City Transportation Officials. It's member cities, New York City, LADOT, they establish guidelines for bicycle infrastructure and soft infrastructure. Complete Streets is put forth by Smart Growth America, and WashDOT does have a program as well with grants, and it's really just kinda providing a, you know, a methodology where you look at use cases and the surrounding environment, and how do you create safe infrastructure for all users? And it can be very low-cost investments, you know, like flex posts, you know, an island crest. It always kinda surprises me that you have road turtles to demarcate when a driver's swerving into a left-turn lane, and yet you don't have that equal treatment for if a driver's swerving into the bike lane. There's low-cost investments that can really pay big dividends in terms of safety and usability.
Thanks.
So, thank you.
I would encourage you to send an email to council@mercer.gov. And then, we can all make sure that we tap into...
I will do that.
The passion. Great.
With full acronyms.
Full acronym exposure. Okay, super. Do we have anyone else for public appearances? Welcome.
My name is Dwight Schaefer, I live in the South End for the last 33 years, and subject tonight is ARCH. The Seattle Times and King Five investigation allege fraudulent activity associated with ARCH, which stands for Regional Coalition of Housing. Affluent buyers have been allowed to buy Eastside ARCH housing at below-market rates, then rent them at market rates or through Airbnb.com, even though buyers of ARCH homes are required to live in them and have below median incomes. Mercer Island Councilwoman Wyker has proposed that Mercer Island donations to ARCH be redirected to restore Mercer Island Youth and Family Services School Counselor Budget Cuts. This proposal was opposed by a majority of the Council, who in effect prioritize a regional charitable organization over city government responsibilities. Even if there were no fraud, I do not want Mercer Island City Council spending taxpayer funds on ARCH that provide little benefit to Mercer Island residents. Councilpersons can spend their own funds for any charity they want, but I reserve the right to donate my funds to charities I prefer. City funds belong to the city residents, not to city councilpersons. Legalizing accessory dwelling units provides a much greater number of affordable housing units on Mercer Island without any taxpayer funds. The City Council should eliminate funding to ARCH and prioritize the needs of Mercer Island citizens and efficiencies of Mercer Island government. Councilpersons that want to do more could solicit voluntary private donations and then bundle them for ARCH.
Thank you. Welcome. Welcome.
Gary Robinson, Mercer Island. The resignation of our highly ethical and competent city manager portends a harbinger of ineffective Mercer Island...
A city attorney, I believe?
City attorney, yes.
We thought you knew something we didn't.
Well, tonight, I would like to contextualize our present situation through a management concept, the organizational life cycle. The organizational life cycle may be considered as a bell-shaped curve. On the left upward slope of the curve, you have entrepreneurial action and building an organization that leads to bureaucracy and groupthink. When an organization like our legacy council reaches this point at the top of the curve, it descends into the aristocratic stage, which Mercer Island Government started some time ago. It now exists to use its resources to support its judgment regarding what it believes residents want and need, not to promote and create new ideas for growth or non-growth, consistent with resident desires. Examples of this decline are the following: creating revenue through development that enable the city to live beyond its means; an MOU for MICA in Mercerdale Park; Proposition 1, the fraudulent garbage contract designed to negate the citizens' vote; Tully's emergency rezone; and 14 COM Plan amendments, which quite possibly may be invalidated, thereby creating chaos; a wider trail through Aubrey-Davis Park; a bus turnaround for sound transit on Mercer Island; the light rail fiasco, where council gave away our SOV rights and acted too late to mitigate sound transit impact, forcing an ill-advised lawsuit that resulted in practically nothing, but cost almost $1 million, and resulted in an increased utility tax; without discussion, raising the city's contribution to Arch from 20,000 to 100,000, a highly questionable organization rife with fraud; dissolution of the library board, thereby depriving Mercer Island residents a voice regarding a bloated organization for which residents pay $6 million per annum. The answer for an organization like Mercer Island, when it descends into the aristocratic stage, is to create a new bell-shaped curve, and consistent with the city, with the community's sense, begin building again. This can only happen when a city council and city manager listen to residents and act on what residents prefer, not what they misrepresent as citizen involvement. And I leave some references to books if you want to look up this concept.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for appearances? All right, hearing none, appearances is closed. The next item of business is the consent calendar, and I'll note that Councilmember Andrell has requested to pull Agenda Bill 5546. So, and that is actually the 2018 budget carryover request. We will put that at the top of this evening's regular business. That leaves us with payables, payroll, minutes from February 1st and 2nd, 2019 planning session minutes, and 2019 regular meeting minutes, AB 5548 Open Space Conservancy Trust 2018 Annual Report, and 2019 Work Plan, and AB 5549 Adoption of the 2019-2020 City Council Priorities and Work Plan. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Consent calendar passes. So we're now going to go ahead and move on to regular business, and as just mentioned, we're going to put AB 5546 at the top, and that is the 2018 budget carryover request. For that, I'm welcome. City Finance Director, Chip Quarter.
Good evening. Sorry, we're having difficulties here, technology. Carryovers, give you a brief reminder, primer, on what they are. We do these really every two years. Remember, we do a biennial budget, so that's why they're once every two years, and it's, we look at the budget in the prior biennium, so 2017, 2018, where there's unspent monies, and usually the carryovers relate to capital projects and capital purchases, or contracts, services, and that are in process or otherwise delayed for some reason. And so we come back to the council like we're doing now, and say we'd like to carry over that unspent budget from the last biennial budget to this biennial budget. Now, we break them into operating carryovers and capital or CIP carryovers. The operating carryovers are very minimal, just about $150,000 in round numbers. When you look at just the general fund only, it's less than $75,000, so these are very, very minimal. Capital is significant, at $4.5 million. What I would note is, as I described in the Agenda Bill, is over half of that $4.5 million relates to the sound transit settlement, and so you have not only the purchase and sale agreement associated with the Tully's property, but also the traffic safety enhancements, and also the due diligence costs on the Tully's property as well. That accounts for half of the total CIP carryover. The rest of it is an assortment of 31 other capital projects. I looked at the carryovers, capital carryovers, from two years ago, and that was like about 3.5, 3.6 million, if memory serves me, just to kind of give you a point of reference. And we have Francie and other staff here, if you have specific questions on carryovers.
Does anybody have any questions? I'm going to look to Lisa, because I'm guessing, it's a good place to start.
Yeah, just a couple. Thanks, Chip. I was wondering, in the capital budget carryovers, the sound transit mitigation, continued work on safety enhancements, and then the long-term parking. One says, the first one says the funding source is the Sound Transit Settlement Agreement funding. The other two are unappropriated fund balance. And I'm just kind of curious, because all, won't all three be eligible for reimbursement at some point?
Yes, and the difference is this, anything that's parking-related is, that's a long-term, we're not eligible for reimbursement until the thing is actually constructed, is a done deal. And so ultimately, it's reimbursable, and remember, there's a split between the city and Sound Transit on the cost of the parking, but a big chunk of this is ultimately reimbursable. That's years down the road now. So we're having to front the cost. That's why we see unappropriated fund balance, we're having to pay for this upfront.
So the Sound Transit Settlement Agreement funding, funding source, is that money that's coming indirectly from Sound Transit, then?
Yeah, we, well, yeah, we try to bill them quarterly, and we just sent a bill for year-end just recently, and so those are reimbursable on a regular basis.
So, kind of effectively, then, this, I don't know, does this kind of de facto modify the 2019-2020 budget?
Mm-hmm. That becomes a layer on top of.
Okay.
I have a question.
Selene?
So, on the transfers, just in the general fund bucket, right? So there's 1, 2, 3, 4, you had $71,785. This isn't really a question about the expense, but in, with those transfers comes the revenue and the expense, right? So it's neutral to the spending in the 19, it's additive to the 1920 spending, but the revenues come with it.
The fund balance comes with it, or there's a grant in one particular case, yeah.
And so when we think about the contingency fund and the 12.5%, that's calibrated on annual spending out of the general fund?
It's calibrated on the originally adopted general fund budget.
Okay, so these don't have an impact on the 12.5%?
No.
Correct. And they also wouldn't have an impact on the 1.2 million cuts, and then the deficit spending reduction? This is not being kind of chipped away at by these transfers in?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I've got a quick question. Looking at most of these, you know, we understand that essentially it's a function of timing.
Right.
Right? But in a couple cases, the question that came to my mind is the extent to which it's more than timing, because it was based on people or assumed people costs, which wouldn't arguably be pushed forward unless they were consulting services fees. Is there any amount of money in here that you would anticipate would not be allocated as originally dedicated, and therefore freed up? For example, I would call out employee compensation adjustments due in 2018, but not finalized until February 2019, $25,000. So in other words, is that some, is that $25,000 still going to be paid out in 2019?
Yes.
So it's nothing that's being accrued?
Sorry, nothing?
It's not an expense that won't be incurred? We've incurred that expense, we're just...
It just got delayed.
Gotcha.
It should have been finished, Market Study should have been finished last year, it wasn't completed until really this month.
Okay. All right, council, any...
Lisa?
One other, one other item, if you don't mind. Mayor, this is just for purposes of general discussion, since we are talking about effectively impacting the 2019 and 2020 budget. I think those of you on the council know that I and others have continued to kind of express some concerns about the Arch funding, and have recently learned, although I think this happened some time back, that Bothell decided to suspend or freeze the Arch contribution pending some better assurances from Arch, that there were kind of audit provisions in place to root out prior abuses and forward-looking compliance measures. And I would just like to put on the table that I would, I would like the council to consider, if we approve these carryovers, to consider an amendment, kind of implementing a similar process for Arch funding, to give the council some assurances that the money is going for the purpose for which it's intended, and that there are sufficient controls in place.
Great, thank you. So, very pleased that Councilmember Andrell gave staff and myself a heads-up about this, which is always much appreciated, because then we can hopefully answer with some degree of coherence. On May 7th, we do have the representative from Arch who's coming, and clearly, I think Mercer Island, not only Mercer Island, but any number of other jurisdictions are out there and asking for, you know, basically, what is an action plan, to understand what is being put in place to correct some of the concerns that have been expressed. So I have a question actually for Chip, potentially for Jesse, as acting city manager tonight, and that is, is there something that we need to act on tonight, if what we want is to say we would like to hold the Arch funding, maybe, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but arguably, freeze it or suspend it until we have confidence that there are proper enforcements in place? Would that impact this particular motion, as it currently stands?
That's unrelated to this motion, because that's not part of the carryovers, but, Ally, did you have something?
So each year, staff comes to you with a budget request for the administration for Arch, as well as a housing fund, housing trust fund request. Those are set to come at the same, on May 7th, the same night that Lindsay will be here from Arch to talk to you about their programming. That would probably be the appropriate time at which you would want to, if you want to make a change to the usual practice, then that would be the right time to do that.
Okay, so if I understand, I'm going to try to repeat what I understand to be the process. She comes as part of a study session.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll have the ability for Q and A, and clearly, she's going to, she will be aware of the conversation that we have tonight, the concern that's been expressed. I would assume, prepared to respond to that. Then as an item of regular business, we would actually vote, both in terms of the membership portion, as well as the capital contribution.
Yeah, it'll be a separate Agenda Bill, which Allison Van Gogh will be presenting, and that is, that is the point at which, you know, you can change the motion for what you would want for 2019. Nothing in this Agenda Bill for 2018 carryovers has anything to do with Arch funding for 2019.
Okay, great. I'm looking at Wendy and then Benson.
So, timing and sequencing, I'm thinking about Jody Chris and the offer on the table to cover school counselors, and now this Arch suspension, and I'm thinking about contributions that can be swapped and changed, and I thought that conversation was April 30th. So can you tell me how these two topics might come together, or be wholly distinct?
So after Jody's comments, I laid out basically the sequence. So what we wanted to do was to make sure that we were first going to be talking about overall fiscal sustainability, and then second, the Youth and Family Services Fund, and that would then enable us to be in a position, now fortunately, that tees up well with this May 7th presentation for March, so they both happen in that early May timeframe. So when council has the information, when council has, in public, has the information, we'll then be in a position to understand what it means to participate with the two foundations in terms of restoring any sort, possibly restoring any services. So Ally's looking at me like I need some help.
I just wanted to also say that you, the council does not have to make a decision on May 7th about Arch. So I just want to say you can change the motion, you can not make a decision, that's up to you guys, I just wanted to make sure you...
So...
Great.
So when do we get to make the final decisions about service delivery and categories and budgets, and specifically, school counselors? When is that?
Well, so again, we're going through the, the first presentation of the possible packages is coming on the 16th, and then we're going specifically through the YFS budget on the 30th, and then following that, we'll be taking council's feedback and making determinations there. But the general sense is that we need to get through those two very important pieces of work to understand the overall, first, to understand the overall financial situation, second, to look specifically at the YFS fund, and then have the information that we need in order to understand what it, and I'm being intentionally vague, because we don't have a plan right now in terms of what we're going to do. We will be in a position, our staff is recommending, we'll be in a much better position to have a qualified conversation after those two agendas.
And then, May 7th for Arch is after all of that?
So the study session is on May 7th, as well as the potential motion and passage of some sort of motions on May 7th.
Can I just add something?
Yeah.
So, on May 30th, when we talk about YFS, including the one-time funding bridge from the foundations, which restores the counselor for September 1 of this year through June 30th of next year, it's the 1920 biennium, that would, if council says okie-dokie, which I'm sure you will, then that will generate on my end a budget adjustment, which we'll bring back to the council. Okay? So that solves it through June 30th of 2020. Now, if you're wondering about, what about the next piece, the rest of 2020, that could potentially be part of the Arch discussion, if you decide to go a different way, or we're looking for funding to make up, make up the difference at a future point in time.
So to be really clear, what I'm interested in is having the city contribute to that, those two organizations, I think it's fair and fitting that we do 1/3, 1/3, 1/3 for the next school year.
So that will be...
So I would like to get to that conversation, whether it's Arch, or whether it's the budget discussions and the service packages. I think that's a conversation we've been having for at least five months, and the school year's coming to an end, and I'd like some certainty and closure around that. And I appreciate the two organizations on this island that have come together and solved the problem, and those aren't just those organizations of boards, it's donors on this island that give money to those organizations. So I want to be clear, for the two organizations, as well as all the donors, that we're all in this together. So that's my...
So we're going to be discussing different policy options, once we've gone through, again, what, you know, what the forecasts and the proposals are, coming from management partners, diving in-depth into the YFS fund, and then we'll be in a position to have a conversation, whether it's 1/3, 1/3, 1/3, or any number of other options that other council members and the community might come up with. That's when we'll get into that, that meaty conversation. Appreciating that there is some time urgency, but we need to have definitely the management partners, so we know the numbers that we have to deal with, so that we have the YFS fund update, and, you know, other, I think, pieces of 2018 fiscal information that will be coming in. So that, that's the proposed path forward, and looking at Jesse, and she's nodding, and Ally's nodding, et cetera, so that's my understanding of the path forward. Yeah, Lisa? Actually, Benson was next, and I'll take you.
Just a point of clarification, I just want to make sure I understand, so we've already passed the budget for biennium, and just confirm whether or not, in that budget, we had a $50,000 contribution for Arch.
Each year.
Right. And so what we're talking about is basically, again, the possibility of suspending the actual...
Trust fund contribution.
Right, right. Pending a presentation regarding the audit or their enforcement procedures, okay? So again, it's already been budgeted, but the question is whether or not we actually are going to actually expand it at this point.
Okay.
I would actually articulate, I think there's two questions, well, I think there's three. First, we could go ahead and approve... First, we could go ahead and approve, you know, as we have in previous years, we can suspend it in a, in the context of an if-then statement. If we have confidence that there are sufficient controls in place, then we will release the funding, or we can say, for this next year, we're not going to give you any money. I mean, so that basically, those would be, what I see is roughly the three different buckets, in terms of the approaches that we might take. But I'm, you know, feel confident that we'll have a pretty robust conversation on May 7th about that.
Yeah, and I, the point was, that I was trying to make is that it has, it is budgeted right, right now. So in the course of the conversation that we've had, it sounded like maybe it wasn't budgeted, but it in fact is, and so the question is really actually spending it. Okay.
Great, Lisa?
Oh, and the only point that I wanted to make, thank you, is, and if we have to wait until May 7th to address this, fine, but we do have two agenda bills, you know, 5546 and 5545, that impact the 2019, 2020 budget. The Arch contribution is a line item in that budget, and it just felt appropriate for me at this point, based on what we know, at least what I know, that it would be appropriate for the city to take a stand for accountability from Arch. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Any other council members? All right, hearing none.
Move, move to approve the 2018 budget carryover requests summarized in Agenda Bill 5546.
Is there a second?
Second.
First and second, and any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. All right, so, next on the agenda, now that I've lost my place, we actually have the second item of regular business, Agenda Bill 5550, Parks and Recreation Commission Recruitment and Work Plan. And for that, I'm going to welcome again Parks Director Jessie Vaughn.
Thank you very much. Again, Jessie Vaughn, I'm your Director of Parks and Recreation, and the mayor stole my thunder earlier on the Parks and Recreation Commission updates. I'm kidding. This, this will be pretty brief. You may recall in 2018, this was before I arrived at the city, you, as a council, were taking a look at the composition of all of your boards and commissions. An outcome of that process was the recommendation to potentially create a new Parks and Recreation Commission, which you ended up doing by ordinance in January of 2019. So we are getting ready to welcome a, a new commission to the city. Wanted to make a couple of comments about their scope of work. I've already hyperemphasized the PROS Plan. That will really be the policy work that they'll be doing for the next 18 months. It'll take them all the way through the end of 2020. We will be leaning on the Parks and Recreation Commission to collaborate, as I've already mentioned, with Arts Council and the Open Space Conservancy Trust in doing that work. We also expect our commissioners to serve as ambassadors for all things Mercer Island Parks and Recreation. What that looks like will actually unfold as we, we get moving. We will hold public comment and welcome public participation in our meetings, commenting on our plans, and other policy work that you may assign them. One of our, our goals, and it's actually in your ordinance, is supporting inclusivity and embracing cultural diversity in our policy recommendations. And I've already mentioned the piece about collaboration. Recruitment. So here we are, we are looking for seven commissioners. As the mayor mentioned earlier, applications are due on May 3rd. We went ahead and established a meeting date, and that is primarily because there aren't many regular days left on our calendar. So the Parks and Recreation Commission will be meeting the first Thursday of the month. Whenever possible, we will be in this room, it's more conducive for that type of meeting and for public comment. On occasion, we'll take a field trip to the community center. Some people have asked, you know, what kind of background should we be looking for? I will just share, the Parks and Recreation umbrella is really wide, so I would encourage applications from folks that are interested in a broad mix of experiences and can represent numerous Parks and Recreation interests while serving on the commission. So how do I get ready if I want to be a Parks and Recreation Commissioner? I and Jess said, go visit a park, trailer open space, or better yet, try to visit all of them. That's a tall order, we do have a number of properties in our system. Drop by the community center, we have a new spring/summer recreation guide, try out a class, for sure. Read our current strategic plan. It's a riveting read, for sure. But in all seriousness, it does provide a foundation for the work that this body will be doing as we move forward. We have policy work happening right now, really, really important planning work with the Aubrey Davis Master Plan, so I would encourage potential commissioner applicants to come to the next open house. So if you talk to anyone, please invite them, and we're doing the same. Important to mention that the new Parks and Recreation Commission will also serve as the Policy Advisory Board on Library Services to, to you, and provide that nexus to the King County Library System. So please also consider visiting your library and learning more about our operation there. And finally, as I've already started to do, I would encourage potential applicants to reach out to me. I would welcome the opportunity to sit down and talk about our operations and what the work looks like going forward. I will mention, as you noted in your Agenda Bill, I had links to all those references I just rattled off. If you go to the city's website, we have updated, actually created a new Parks and Recreation Commission page, I believe thanks goes to Deb and probably Ally too. And we have populated that with links to some of those documents I just referenced. So that is all I have for you tonight on the Parks and Recreation Commission, but I'd be happy to answer questions you might have.
Counsel, any questions? Benson, Bruce?
Jessie, can you remind us what this selection process is? Obviously, we hope that there'll be a lot of applicants that submit their names, but can you just tell us how it goes from there down to the actual seven?
You know, I, this will be the first time I have been here for a commission selection process, so I need to look to my colleagues, either Ally or Deb, to answer that question, if you don't mind.
Well, Councilmember Wong, it will follow the process, the process we spent 2018 going through. So, applications come into the city clerk's office, the city clerk then forwards them on to staff liaisons to review. Staff can choose to make a recommendation if they would like. All the applications then go to the entire city council. The mayor and deputy mayor then make decisions about who they would like to see appointed or reappointed to boards and commissions, and then that is sent out to the entire council. And then at a council meeting, the council members make a motion to appoint those people, or change if so desired.
Good, Bruce, and then Selene?
Oh, okay.
So Jessie, I put the comment in a question, I'm going to throw just a little bit of cold water, but you can reject that if you want. There's a, a sense here of a board that will have, it's not stated, but a little bit of a sense of a board that will have authority over our parks. And I, I think it's important for folks to have a realistic expectation of what their level of authority actually is, particularly because we've run into situations in the past where we've had board members who felt a bit blindsided to find out that they didn't have final say over decision-making. And so in this case, I think it's important for people going in, yes, be enthusiastic, yes, be as knowledgeable as you can be, come to this with a tremendous spirit of endeavor, but recognize that ultimately, you are, and I'm going to say it, and then you can correct me, advisory to staff and advisory to council. So this is not a board that will make final decisions, and if, if you came with that expectation, you might end up frustrated. So you, now, take it from there.
Actually, that wasn't, that wasn't cold water, I think that probably needed to be said, so thank you for raising that issue. Especially with Parks and Recreation Commissions, I've seen this in my career, people often come to the board and want to make decisions about the type of recreation program we might offer. That is not the level at which a board member would serve here. Your point is well taken, they are policy advisors to the city council and to the staff on matters assigned to them. So as I've already mentioned, you have two big policy plans in play right now, the Aubrey Davis Master Plan and the PROS Plan, those will be their two primary work plan items going forward. But operational decisions are really left to the professional staff that we've, we've hired to perform a variety of functions in our department.
Counsel, any further questions? Benson?
You've already sort of answered this, you know, I guess I am asking it again, only because I think it's, you know, perhaps important to make sure we understand the role of this commission vis-à-vis the Open Space Conservancy Trust. And so obviously, the trust takes care, makes decisions pertaining to Pioneer Park and the other open spaces, but can you just, again, just elaborate on how these two organizations are actually going to work together?
Sure.
So that, you know, there could be territorial kind of tendencies.
Sure, and this, this discussion, actually, I just met with Open Space Board a couple of weeks ago, and we actually talked about this. So the Open Space Conservancy Trust, they are charged with kind of overseeing our policies around Instrom, Instrom, am I saying that right? And Pioneer Park, they have that corner of our world. The Parks Commission is going to advise on, you know, sort of everything else. Where, where you're starting to see us needing to work together is, nothing in the Parks and Recreation world is that easily delineated, and I was talking to the city manager about this this afternoon. Luther Burbank Park is a very perfect example. We have a playground, active recreation, we have a beach, active recreation, we have open fields, active recreation, and then we also have wonderful open space areas and wetlands that are managed differently. All of that's coming together in one park facility. So I, and while the Open Space Trust doesn't oversee that open space per se, certainly the best practices that we're applying in Pioneer Park, maybe suitable treatments for others areas of the park system, we, we're going to have to figure out how to work together and collaborate. I shared with you, Councilmember Wong, by email, that that's my job, is to keep an eye on, on policies and make sure that boards, multiple boards are touching issues, and to really make sure we're collaborating on decisions. I mentioned in the previous presentation that I just recently made the decision to merge the park maintenance team and the natural resources team together. And that was an efficiency decision, because the work is overlapping so significantly, and both teams benefit greatly from the expertise of the other. So even in our daily operational life, we're bringing these two functions together. I have a lot to sort out, I know there may be concerns about who's in charge of what. I, I will ask you to trust me, and that I will be very mindful of keeping everyone abreast of decision-making and involved.
Counsel, any further discussion, questions? I'm sure there'll be a lot more in the, the months to come, but thank you, and it's been a great evening of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you very much.
So with that, we are now going to move to this third and final item of regular business, which is Agenda Bill 5545, which is the proposed deficit spending reductions to 2019, 2020 general fund adopted budget. And welcome again to Chip Quarter.
Hello again, folks. I just have five quick slides after this one, and just to kind of set this up, and then we'll, we'll talk about how do you want to digest or process this. As a reminder, you saw these list of proposed deficit spending reductions back at your February planning session. So let's set this up. The budget, the 1920 budget for the general fund and the YFS fund was balanced in three ways. We assumed no levied lift, we used 1.78 million in one-time resources to help balance the biennium, we made, the council made 1.36 million in net service level reductions. Okay, so those taken together is how we balance 19 and 20. Following the failure of Prop 1, back in November of last year, the council directed staff at your December 4th meeting to reduce the amount of one-time resources used to balance the 1920 budget by 1.2 million. And just to, for the, for the public's benefit, the reason for that, even though the budget was balanced, the reason for that direction is when you look at the forecast, there's a fiscal cliff when you get out to 2021, 2022. It, it really drops off significantly. And so the thinking of the council, and it's, it's wise, is let's, let's try to take that, that cliff and reduce the slope of it a little bit by doing more cuts sooner. It's not easy, it's not fun, but it's fiscally prudent. In addition, the council stated at that December 4th meeting, the city's at the beginning of defining a new normal, given the failure of Prop 1, there can be nothing sacred, this is the hardest one, nothing sacred in terms of cuts and measures, given the projected deficits, that fiscal cliff in 21, 22. The council's committed to providing a path forward for future councils, and beginning the process of transitioning to new lower levels of service. And finally, the city will use the Fiscal Sustainability Plan, which is currently being developed by management partners, to guide the council and staff in making really tough decisions, not only regarding the current biennium, but also beyond. A first draft of those proposed spending reductions was presented to the council, as I mentioned earlier, at your February planning session. Staff's takeaway, and I think I'm, we're accurate on this, and you'll correct us if we're wrong, but on the general fund-related deficit spending reductions, our takeaway was there appeared to be general council's consensus on staff's proposal. Regarding the YFS deficit spending reductions, the council directed staff to identified one-time funding source options for restoring the elementary school counselors, and we've already talked about that this evening, we'll talk more about that on April 30th, and to provide, of course, a comprehensive briefing on financing for the YFS department, with a special focus on the thrift shop, but also other funding sources for YFS. And just to, just to kind of be really clear about this upcoming April 30th meeting, so we will come back to the council, not only talk about the one-time funding solution, which was mentioned tonight, but also the briefing and the YFS fund deficit spending reductions, which you saw back at your February planning session, but we decided to push those from this meeting to the April 30th meeting, just keep it all together in one Okay, here's a summary, this is in your Agenda Bill of these proposed, again, general fund, proposed deficit spending reductions, and when I use that word, this is actually Selene's word, he came up with that, that phrase, and you can do it on the expenditure side through reductions, but also enhanced revenues. Now, what I'll point out, when you see on the first line expenditure reductions, that's pretty straightforward, broken out by year, and for the, the totals, 1.26 million dollars for the biennium. Then you see this less revenue reductions related to the expenditure reductions. Think parks-related stuff, whenever you're cutting, take summer celebration, which is proposed here, there are revenues associated with that. So you get the expenditure cut, but it gets reduced by the amount of revenue that's generated. It helps, it not helps, it mitigates, or not, it partially reduces that expenditure reduction. And then we have some new revenues identified. The total deficit spending reductions for the biennium, we exceeded the 1.2 million dollar goal and hit 1.34 million, just a reminder. So this 1.34 million plus, there was 1.36 million in net expenditure reductions, which are already baked into the biennial budget, so taken together, it's actually just a little over 2.7 million dollars for the biennium. When you look at what's proposed here in terms of staffing changes, so we have the senior project manager in the city manager's office, this would be eliminated beginning May 1st of 2020, that's a 0.58 FTE. There's a help desk, help desk technician in our IT folks, I mistakenly put 2029, that should be 2019. This was a position that was approved in the 1718 budget by the elimination of the East Side Narcotics Task Force detective position when ENTF was dissolved back in the end of 16 timeframe. So we swapped it that way, but we've eliminated that position, are proposed eliminating this position in 19 and 20, eliminating the community center reservation specialist in 19, and then restoring the deputy fire chief. This was just based on lots of community feedback, talking to the council as well, and just thinking through, this is our number one priority of government, we want to try to preserve public safety in 1920 as much as possible. And when you look at previous biennial citizen surveys, you consistently, consistently see, you know, public safety is, is the number one priority as well, and so that was our thinking in terms of restoring it. When you look at the biennium, the net reductions, even with that restoration of the deputy fire chief is 1.58 FTEs. And that brings us to council deliberation and action. You know, I guess the things the staff are looking for is, does the council need additional information, and if we can't provide it tonight, we can bring it back to you at a subsequent council meeting. Are there any changes to the council? The council wants to make the staff's proposal, then there's a motion before you. If helpful, I do have slides here that have all the detailed deficit spending reductions, if you wanted to walk through it in a linear fashion. Or if you just want to keep it wide open, that's fine. Whatever works for you.
Super. Okay. Counsel, any questions? Lisa?
Well, I was just first to hit my microphone button, I guess. But so I'm trying to understand what exactly we're being asked to approve, given this whole 28 days from now, youth and family services conversation that we're going to have? And at what point, what council, what would council be directing staff to prepare a budget amending ordinance about? Or is that still open until after the 30th?
It would be, these are general fund reductions. Now granted, there is one of these that relates to the funding of YFS. There's a connection to YFS in here. Remember, the general fund, the traditional contribution to supporting YFS has been $400,000. It got reduced in the 1920 budget by a little bit. And so this proposes eliminating that, beginning in 2020. That is on page seven. And $390,000, that's the remaining annual contribution from the general fund to YFS in 2020, proposed eliminating that. Of course, that's, you know, that would require either new revenues and/or service level reductions in YFS to offset that reduction. It's linked, right? But this is looking at just the general fund perspective. And so if council approves these, we will come back and amend the budget. I'll do it as part of the quarterly financial status report we're bringing to you on May 7.
Saleem and then Benson? Oh, Bruce.
On the footnote about the IT director and the reorg of IT and that being turned from a director to manager position, is that, I'm trying to understand, has everything been captured in the deficit spending reductions? Or are there some bullets here that are not incorporated into that like that? I assume there's some net savings in the director position being.
And that's, and it's listed here. Information geographic services on page six. We classify the IGS director to IGS manager, so I call out that savings.
And that, but that's in the 1.36, right?
No, no, no. That's in this 1.34 million. 1.36 is already in the adopted budget, already baked in there. This is the additional 1.34 million of proposed reductions.
Yeah, no, sorry, I'm confusing the numbers. So that is baked into the deficit spending reduction amount that we're trying to prove tonight?
Yes. Yes.
So if that's in there, does the IT sinking fund not take a reduction with the elimination of the help desk and the director position? Like, is that, is there not further savings because of these staffing reductions and efficiencies that are still not reflected in the budget?
The sinking fund.
So the IT sinking fund is a portioned amount per head for IT overhead, which is equipment, fixed costs, and some staff, right?
Yeah, we separate them. We have an MNO charge and a computer replacement charge, which isn't impacted. It's the former that's impacted.
Well, both would be impacted to the extent that you have staff attrition, because we've lost a lot of staff. So you do have some surplus IT equipment. So presumably, you know, if you add a staff right now, there's probably some equipment that could be repurposed. I know this is small potatoes, but I don't want to write off the fact that the capital side of that sinking fund could be impacted as well.
It could be.
But on the MNO side, certainly, you lost a director, and you've eliminated that position, replaced it with a management position, manager position. That's reporting to you. You've eliminated a help desk position. I know we spent that money restoring the fire chief position, but does the IT sinking fund not have a net reduction, which is now enterprise-wide?
I don't like calling it sinking fund, because that's computer replacement. That's a sinking fund.
Okay.
This is, the MNO charge.
It's still an overhead charge.
What I've identified is, what's the estimated general fund impact? It's not down, nailed into the Nats eyelash, but it's really close. There's also an impact on utilities. I didn't reflect that here.
Yeah, I saw.
And so what I would have to do is ultimately, when I do, I would probably go back and rework the IT rates, MNO rates, and reestablish them for 19 and 20, based on these changes.
Okay, so that's yet to be done.
Yeah.
And the same would apply on the vehicle side. If we have cuts in the park department, and if we don't need the 200 vehicles that we have, we would again stop charging or lower the charge off to the departments to replace vehicles that we potentially would not.
I, yeah, you and I have talked about this before. That's what, we could make those adjustments.
All I'm trying to establish is that there is still a path forward for additional deficit spending reductions in the form of optimizations to the IT overhead charge and the vehicle sinking fund effectively.
Yeah, which doesn't, the vehicle doesn't impact IT, but impacts fleet.
Right, they're distinct and separate.
Yes.
Okay.
But yeah, if there's, when there's attrition, and we decide not to replace that position, then it'll be a decision about the computer. And if there's a vehicle, does this become a permanent reduction? If so, then we will, I'll take care of it.
Okay. Thanks.
Apologies, Bruce, I hadn't seen your hand. So go Bruce.
Benson was ahead of me. So I was late into that. Well, all right, I'll jump in. So Chip, you've asked whether we want you to go deeper. I guess I'm sort of looking for a, put your arms around this whole thing for a moment and talk about how you arrived at this, you being Julie and everyone, arrived at this being the set of reductions to take? And whether there's anything the council should be offering in the way of guidance as to, yes, this and not that? Because you're not really presenting us with a A or B, pick, you know, pick one or the other. You're presenting us with what I presume has been very carefully vetted already by staff, but we haven't really heard that. So I'm just looking for.
Well, we've been through a lot of this.
Yeah, we went through this, I think, line by line, back at the February planning session, but it's been a while ago.
Yeah. And so forgive me.
No worries. Again, you gave us a target of 1.2 million. This was a leadership team effort. This wasn't Julie throwing darts, or me throwing darts, and coming up and talking together what made the most sense. Very simply put, I mean, there's lots of different things that go into here, but.
And I guess, you know, to back up just a little bit, I will say, much of this was discussed earlier, but some of it was not. The reorganization of your department, for instance, was not. And so there's a bit of new information here, or maybe I'm just misremembering.
It was, the numbers have changed. It was on there before, and I can talk about that if you're interested.
I'm just trying to, as I say, get sort of the big picture here and make sure that.
It was just, again, we had a very short timeframe to get ready for your planning session, and we just had January, right? And not even all of January kind of pulled us together. So while some of the numbers have been tweaked since then, most of what's here overwhelmingly is the same as what you saw back in February, and it was our best take at that point in time. Recognizing that, you know, there'll be, you know, there'll be opportunities in terms of vacancies, and that gives us a chance to leave those vacant. The decision will be, is that a temporary vacancy or an ongoing vacancy? We would make that permanent and go beyond the 1.34 million. But this is the minimum.
Okay.
We're comfortable with this.
We have Benson, then Wendy, then Saleem.
So Chip, this is kind of more of a general question, but on the next turnaround, next go-around, I have a more specific question. But, you know, obviously, a lot of the discussion here, or at least a lot of the description in the Agenda Bill, is about reorganization, changing the classification of employees. So a couple of things. One of them is, as we get new employees, I guess some of the folks are retiring, or at least that's projected to retire. So as we get new employees, presumably they'll come in, they have a different classification, presumably they're coming in perhaps at a lower salary. My question is, as far as skill set goes, are we losing things down the road in terms of skill set? And how's that going to impact the ability to deliver services and morale? One question I had specifically for you is that if you're taking over, if the IGS people are now reporting to you, how much time is that taking of your time? And how's that impacting the delivery of your responsibilities and primary responsibilities for the finances? So I guess kind of a general thing in terms of all this changeover now, how's it really impacting the internal operations?
Yeah, there's an impact. Is it, in terms of the IT director taking a new job, is that a huge impact on me personally? No. But there's an impact there. He's got extremely capable staff. To answer your earlier question, do I think it's possible to replace Mike Kaser? It's unlikely. There likely will be a change in level of service. I hope, I hope I'm wrong. But he was an exceptional talent, and other people who've worked with him feel the same way. That's what I worry about, is can we replace people? Because people who do their homework and see that we're under fiscal stress, are they really going to be attracted, the people we really want, to come to work for Mercer Island? That's the fear, right? But I can't control that. The best we can do is put as much honey as we can on the job opening and see what we attract. Go from there.
Do you think that there's going to be a downgrade in skill set that is coming to the island?
I don't know, Benson. It's just, we won't know until we actually go through the process. Is it a concern? Is there a fear there? Sure, there's a fear there. But here's another, like, a more likely scenario is we become a training ground, and so it becomes kind of a revolving door. Someone comes for a few years, and then they move on. That's a more likely scenario. But we just don't know.
Well, and I would just call out, too, when you go from a director-level position to a manager-level position, you're gonna have probably less depth of experience, both in terms of subject matter and people management. I think, you know, I would just unfortunately remind us all that what we talked about was the fact that services are going to be reduced. You know, it's not a matter of having the same number of people do even more. This is about the size of the plate gets smaller. So, yes, and I see Jesse.
I don't want to interrupt if you wanted to finish that thought. I appreciate the question, Councilmember Wong, and I really feel, sitting here tonight on behalf of the staff, to share with you that morale is, in fact, taking a hit. As one of the newest members of the staff team, you are really fortunate to have a tenured staff. Many have been here for almost two decades or more, that bring passion and drive and just an incredible number of gifts to their jobs every day. And we have lost some of those people very recently. So it is a concern. And I know if Julie were here tonight, she would say, it's our problem to solve together, right? The council and the leadership team and the staff. It is a concern of ours. We're here, we're in it. We really appreciate you calling it out, and, you know, let's keep working on it.
Okay, and we have Wendy, Saleem.
And I'll just add, once you lose an employee who's been here for 10 or 20 years and has the institutional knowledge, of course you have a reduction in levels of service and performance. So I hope we are able to attract new talent. That would be awesome. It is a challenging time, with unemployment being at 3%. So my question is kind of a follow-up for Bruce, is around comparing apples to apples in this big budget summit coming on April 30. And I wonder what the impact would be is if we waited to restore the deputy fire chief position until April 30. And I just, I don't know what we're comparing apples to apples with. I know public safety is our number one priority, and I know there are other priorities, and there's talk of mental health services being a public safety issue as well. So I'm just curious, what is the impact of waiting a month to have the restoration of this position discussed?
Not a problem.
With all the other issues?
That's a cut in 2020, so you have time.
So we have time.
Right.
So.
There's just a benefit to nailing these down, memorializing these sooner rather than later. It creates some certainty, maybe not favorable certainty, but certainty nevertheless. It's just nice to bake these into the budget. But is it critical? No. It'd be fine to wait.
So.
On that particular one.
So if we approve this tonight as is, then the position gets restored right now and we don't talk about it on April 30, right?
Correct. It's just YFS on the 30th.
Right, and if we put it on the table, then we will talk about it on the 30th.
On the 30th, or to be determined by the council, or when May 7 is packed, so probably on the 30th.
Right. Okay.
So if I understand, May 16 is management partners? What we have going on the 30th?
April 16.
Sorry, April 16. And then on the 30th is when we're discussing YFS funds.
Special meeting, YFS focus.
And on the 7th is when you were planning to come back and bring.
Arch.
This immortalized?
Yeah, the year-end financial status report and corresponding budget adjustments, if this gets approved.
And arch is on the 7th.
And arch is on the 7th, yeah.
Arch is on the 7th. Yes, so this is basically providing staff direction, and I'm gonna actually check, approve deficit spending reductions, and direct staff to prepare a budget amending ordinance. So in other words, we will see this again, coming back on the 7th in terms of a formal set of ordinances.
But not these, these positions we reduce and these positions we add will be immortalized?
No, it will come, so tonight we're providing direction, and then on the 7th is when we would vote that.
Take actual.
Immortalize probably isn't the right word for it.
Well, so.
But would formalize the process for 20, these are essentially 2020.
And we're not likely to change it then, if we're not likely to change it tonight?
I would, I would say, I'm not sure I would agree with that, because we're gonna go through significant amount of work in terms of the city's finances on the 16th and the 30th, but that's one person's position.
Line by line, I mean, the list of reductions and changes, is that gonna be on the 30th?
I'm sorry, the ones related to YFS?
All of the reductions that we're talking about, right?
I'm assuming, because we went through them at your planning session.
Yeah.
Julie directed me, don't go through them again.
Right.
Unless the council wanted to.
Right, so we're trying to stay up here.
Yeah.
Right, and here we're sort of in the middle, and we're not quite down in the weeds yet. But if we approve this package tonight as is, we're not likely to look at this level of granular detail later at the end of the month.
Correct.
Well, I think that would be council's decision.
Yeah, it is your decision. I mean, you reserve the right to change your mind or make an amendment in light of new information come on May 7, right? You'll see the ordinance, and you know, let's tweak this.
I think, if I can take a stab at it, I think the idea is that these were discussed basically at the February planning session. Council, you know, doesn't vote then, but it gave a general thumbs up in terms of the direction for staff to go ahead and head. I think, you know, as Bruce pointed out, there are one or two changes that are in here, in particular, you know, the finance department reorganization that are perhaps not intentional budget initiatives, but as a function of an organization that's changing through retirement attrition, et cetera. So that's the direction that we provided here. We're saying, yes, generally, we're good with, you know, the direction provided in February, as, you know, reiterated here. Then we go through the big financial picture on the 16th, then we go through YFS specific on the 30th. And then on May 7, we have all that information in front of us. And the extent to which an individual or council wants to go through these particular items, they can certainly come back and be discussed again. What I took away is the idea being that we then, on May 7, have the, kind of the full package of information. Meaning, again, we have the benefit of management partners, we have the benefit of quarter, we have the benefit of YFS, et cetera. So hence, the timing is May 7.
I think that's well put.
Does anybody want to, I'm just trying to lay out the process. I'm not advocating for a position, but that's my understanding of the sequencing and the thought process behind the sequencing. I see Ally reaching for the mic.
Yeah, Jesse and I were just looking at the planning schedule, and we do have the first quarter 2019 financial status report on the May 21 meeting with another budget amending ordinance. So if it wasn't all finalized on the 7th, then we could bring on the 21st. I think the goal for tonight is to look at this list again, which you've already looked at at your planning session, so that staff can then start making the changes and can put this into an ordinance for you to adopt on the 7th or the 21st, so we can finalize.
Do you have a clarifying question? Because we also have Saleem.
No, no, no. I have a follow-up to.
Okay, go for it. If it's a follow-up.
It still pertains to the deputy fire chief. And so, you know, I gave my thumbs up, I think, with, I think all the other city council members did so as well during the planning session. I think what kind of struck me was this last line in the. I think what kind of struck me was this last line in the bullet where it talks about, however, it's highly likely that services level reductions to public safety will be required to balance the budget in 2021, 2022, given the fiscal cliff. So I guess what made me think about this is that is the deputy fire chief position, I see Chief Hyman there as well, is this a position that is likely to be on the chopping block in 2021, 2022? And if it is, then I just wonder why would we reinstate it for a one-year period?
Trying to protect public safety for 19 and 20.
I understand that. I mean, I understand the rationale.
But I think the question was, is it anticipated that this particular position would be on the chopping block?
I think it's fair to say it would be on the list for consideration again. And the fiscal cliff is so significant that you'll be, you'll have no choice, like I've said, but to look at public safety now. With that said, you need to understand, there's a number of retirements, and police in particular. That creates, the reorg in my department, that opportunity was created through three retirements that will happen eventually. And so there's another, a number of significant planned retirements in 2021, 2022, and police will give us the opportunity to rework some things and Ed's already thinking about that, your chief of police. And so, but while that will help and doesn't necessarily involve staff reductions, you have some hard choices come 21, 2022. That will be a difficult budget process.
We can come back.
So just because the chief is here and that discussion challenges me a little bit, I'm still definitely supportive of that restoration. I think that's an important decision that we went through at the planning meeting, we talked about, we saw the value, we had a long discussion about the value in that position. And even from a transition purpose, if you were going to look at those cuts in the next biennium, it would still be, in my mind and based on the information I heard, an important period to transition through, having that restoration. It's not a position that is currently cut, that person, the deputy chief is serving now. So it's, you know, it's restoration only in budgetary terms. What I wanted to piggyback on was Jesse's comment about being a new member here and staff and kind of the morale. One of the things I think about is I think about how are we communicating, how are we measuring and how are we able to illustrate how much progress we're making with these cuts? We had all the programming cuts that were really kind of due to attrition, but also had a cost component to them. This round of cuts, the deficit spending reductions, so you're at, we're at 2.7 million in the biennium. And so we look at, where do we end? Where did the general fund end 2018 from an expenditure and revenue perspective? And then where is 19 going to end and where is 20 going to end based on the 2.7? I think we're not doing a great job of telling the public, telling staff, how close are we to a goal, a finite goal? And tonight, looking at the general fund and saying, tonight's our opportunity to put a fork in the general fund and say enough's enough, right? But we did what we needed to do. We'd have some more work with the management partners in a long-term sustainability fund. But it's about stabilizing the spending, stabilizing the ship. And it sends a strong message to staff to say, as a council, general fund, we put a fork in it tonight, yes, staff needs to go away and prepare the ordinance, make the budget adjustment, but that's that block of work that was discussed at the planning session, finalized somewhat tonight. YFS is the next part of that, right? And we have the April 30th discussion on that. In between, we have what we're going to hear from management partners, but that's going to be the first time we hear it. So I don't expect anybody's acting on anything on 416. So I think as the cadence moves forward, and as we understand this is a problem that exists in this biennium and certainly much more beyond, we need to start making some decisions as a council, start putting a fork in these things and moving on, or the attrition is going to be that much worse. I'm ready tonight to accept these changes. I don't see any need to go further right now. We've got a lot of other pieces moving. And so that would be my recommendation.
Okay, so we can take further questions or I would entertain a motion if you're ready to put a fork in it. All right.
I will move to approve the proposed deficit spending reductions in the general fund to the 2019-2020 adopted budget and direct staff to prepare a budget amending ordinance as part of the next financial status report.
Second.
All right, it's been first and second in council. Is there any discussion? Go for it, Benson.
Yeah, I am not really advocating for not restoring the deputy fire position, but I guess, I am troubled by the fact that that could be a one-year transitional position. And I suppose if we're trying to lower the, make the cliff even less dire, I suppose you could argue that maybe we shouldn't restore that position, that would lower things. I guess I was just bothered by that statement in the agenda bill because it really highlighted for me that that position was at risk. It could be other positions in the public safety world, but that one in particular. So anyway, I, obviously, public safety is paramount. I get it. I'm just trying to balance the two. I mean, it's just kind of a, it's a difficult thing. But I guess there's a few minutes between now and the vote.
Wendy, then Bruce?
I guess I'd like to propose that we hold off on restoring the deputy fire chief position until the April 30th discussion, after we hear from management partners, after we see how steep the cliff is, after we see what our first quarter money situation looks like. I'm reluctant to add a position that's that expensive in this silo without the bigger budget picture. We're looking at budgets sequentially and I totally agree with wanting to put a fork in it, but this is a big enough budget item in a cost-cutting year with lots of priorities and a lot of public safety work happening. It's good work, it's important work, and I know we're looking at alternative ways to sort of bring efficiencies to those departments. I just, I think if we could wait a few more weeks and see how this position fits within the rest of the financial situation we're in, I think it gives us a little bit of time for a little greater analysis and maybe better decision-making.
Okay, I see that Jesse wants to weigh in and then I'll go to Bruce.
Let me zoom out for a moment and see if I can offer some help with context here. I believe, Chip, please correct me if I'm wrong, that in the next biennium to balance the budget, the position reduction is somewhere on the order of magnitude of 30 positions? 20?
It keeps changing, right? Depending on how many of this, you know, we adopt.
Let's go with glass half full and say it's only 20.
It's in the 20s.
My point is that we actually have then 20 positions that would be considered transitional right now in that sort of doom and gloom, worst-case scenario. What's happening behind the scenes, and to your point, Deputy Mayor, we haven't really been talking about it in council chambers, is every single leadership team member right now is retooling their department. And we did this work initially in December and January, and now we've moved on to what comes next. Parks and Recreation Department has been reorganized, is in the process, still ongoing. IT Finance being reorganized, Public Safety also doing a deep dive into what they can do to make reductions. So this is not static work, this is dynamic, it's ongoing. We do need this biennium to help prepare for the next biennium. So I would ask you to consider that in your discussion tonight.
Thank you, I think that was helpful. Bruce?
Does it help or hurt then to leave this position in or out, Jesse?
I would advocate on behalf of the fire chief that we retain that position and allow the chief to continue working with his staff and the city manager to come up with a plan for the next biennium. And we shared this at the retreat, and I have to say, as your Parks and Recreation Director, we benefit greatly from the deputy fire chief. He plays a key role in coordinating operations across the city that isn't perhaps transparent and real visible. The loss of that position has a really significant internal operational impact to us, and I'm not sure how we close the gap on really short notice, to be candid.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Great, Bruce?
Saleem said this well, but I want to just highlight it. He said this is a restoration in financial terms only. Benson, the way you phrased it might lead one to believe that this is a position that has not existed and is now coming back again, and why would we want to restore a position that didn't exist? And that's, that would be perhaps confusing to people because the actuality is that the position existed in the past, it exists today, and what's proposed now is that it exists tomorrow. And the only debate is whether it should go away in the future, but not that it's coming back and then going away again. So, and I've made this motion because staff made a clear articulation, I think, of the need for this position. And I felt that was compelling to me. Public safety clearly is our top priority. And so I'm supportive of what staff has asked us to do in that regard.
I certainly, yeah, thank you. I certainly didn't want to give an incorrect impression. So I appreciate the clarification. I definitely appreciate Jesse's statement. I think, you know, as I said, I supported, we did cut that position initially.
Financially in 2020?
That's right, that's right. So I'm supportive, I understand the need, and so I'm, given the dire, what could be very dire in the next biennium, I'm certainly going to go ahead and support this motion. But I really do appreciate Jesse, your comments.
Saleem?
So, look, I appreciate you turning the corner on that or maybe resolving the doubt. I had the benefit of sitting down with both the chiefs, Chief Hyman and Chief Holmes, and talking in pretty good depth about what cuts to public safety beyond this biennium look like. And as Chip mentioned, there's retirements, there's optimizations, you know, things like the dive team and some changes that we could make in delivery of service. But my sense of it was that this is such a critical position and this was not the first thing that they were going to look at, certainly not, that that was necessary for chain of command and for so many reasons that we already talked about, but, so I appreciate that.
Counsel, any further comment? Right hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done, comprehensive. We will now move on to business and counsel, please let the record show that council member Wiesentiner did ask for an excused absence tonight. So I'm trying to remember where we landed on the process, I think because he asked in advance, he is excused without a vote? Is that correct? Or do we still need to vote? Still need to vote? Okay.
I move to excuse the absence.
All right, first and second, and all in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, he is excused. Are there any other upcoming council member absences to report?
Potentially July 2nd.
Okay. I think we were looking to reschedule July 2nd because it was coming sort of on the cusp of what might be a long holiday weekend. So I don't, off the top of my head, remember where we landed with that regard. It might still be some conversation in motion.
It may be a conversation in motion. I would maybe suggest canceling the meeting versus rescheduling because you do have your June 21 mid-year planning session. Just to plug for staff that back-to-back meetings are tough, week to week, so, but right now there's only one item and we can definitely move that item.
Would you be recommending we did that tonight or do we wait for the city manager to come back?
I think it would be fantastic to cancel many meetings while Julie...
I think she would be, she would be fine with that being canceled tonight if you would choose to.
Counsel, do we want to cancel the July 2nd meeting? Which essentially means that we would not add an additional meeting at some point. We would not meet and we would not add an additional meeting. I think if extraordinary circumstances came forward, of course, we would work with everyone's schedule. I'm seeing thumbs up? Can we go with a thumbs up, Wendy? Okay. Great. That was efficient, super. So now we move on to the planning schedule for that. We're going to turn to Parks Director Jesse Bond.
Good evening, thank you. So we've already talked a little bit about April 16th. I'd like to call your attention to the planning schedule. We didn't note the time, but we do need to add an executive session to the 16th and wanted to check your availability for a 5 o'clock start. It would be a one-hour executive session.
Counsel, do you, quick calendar check, are people okay? All right. Benson, you're just going to take a quick look? Oh, you're fine, okay. I think we're good with that. So 5 o'clock start on the 16th?
Wonderful. The city manager also asked me just to remind you that on April 16th, we have carved out the bulk of the regular business that night for the fiscal sustainability plan. And I believe I'm actually looking at a old copy because we've added the meeting on April 30th. There we go. Yep. And we have moved the transit interchange discussion to April 30th. Is that correct? Yes.
All right, because that was going to be an extra, extra-long meeting at that rate.
Yes. You've talked a little bit about May 7th. Arch will be joining us that evening for the study session and we will have a subsequent item that I know probably won't be on consent after the discussion this evening. And did you have any other updates, Ally, that I didn't cover? Okay, so we are confirmed for a 5 o'clock start on April 16th.
Okay.
That was my main item.
All right, super. So counsel, there are no board appointments tonight, however, we know that the annual board recruitment process is well underway. Just a reminder that the open positions include the Arts Council, two positions, Design Commission, two positions, Parks and Recreation Commission, as we've heard, has seven full seats. Planning Commission is two positions. So anybody who's interested, please be sure to mail or email your application to the clerk by close of business, 5:00 PM Friday, May 3rd. With that, council member reports. We're going to start with Bruce.
Steel Saleem's thunder here. So Saleem suggested to the Sound Transit staff that we get a tour of the construction project East Link, and it was a great tour, best tour I've ever been on in terms of its depth and amount of detail. And so I'd certainly recommend other council members all participate in it, but we spent the entire afternoon, got to go into pontoons and into the Bellevue Tunnel, and it was great. So suggest you do it. I'll be in Olympia probably on Thursday, again testifying regarding environmental bills, it's clean fuel standards in front of the Senate Finance Committee on, Senate Transportation Committee, excuse me, on Thursday. So that's it.
So just to piggyback on the Sound Transit thing, I think there is additional opportunities, so I would suggest doing that. And they said they were going to run the tour backward, start at the far end of ST2, maybe out in Redmond, and then head this way. So, you know, that's just, it was a four hours, good four hours, take some water, take steel toe shoes, your personal protective gear. But I think you would really enjoy the tour. You'll get a lot of it. They brought a lot of resources out, answered a lot of questions during that four hours. So it just gives you a great opportunity to ask about the project. The one thing that I like to call out is that as you head west on I-90 and you're crossing the floating bridge, if you look into the center lanes, about maybe two-thirds of the way across, there is now a section of track glued to the, to the bridge deck. And this was the first test section that was, WestDOT wanted fully tested about, you know, every component and all that. And so that just got certified. So you're going to see track very quickly laid across the floating bridge now that they've tested and certified all that. And the post-tensioning is done, the bridge shrank three inches, three and a half inches. And it's still floating.
That's good news for bad news. Okay, Benson?
Well, hopefully, so Sound Transit will send out another potential tour dates. That's great. I really don't have anything other than to, I'll let Wendy talk about the race, I guess. But on Friday, on the 29th, I did attend a, basically it was an appreciation event for former... for former city council member Terry Popmire, Friends of Youth, she was basically retiring as executive director. And so it was good to see a lot of Mercer Island people there, but they paid homage to her for all her leadership. I think most people know her and know how capable she is, and so, anyway, that was a good event, so.
Lisa? Wendy?
I just want to thank Carrie Sand for her service, I forget when her last day is, but it's too soon, in my opinion, May 10th, so we get her for another month, so extract as much information and knowledge as you can from her because it's going to be a big loss for us, and congratulations to her on her next gig. Anyway, back to that. So, other than that, what is it, SCA dinner on the 3rd, tomorrow night?
Well, how was the race?
The race was awesome, we had 2,700 participants, and I'm not sure where the money thing landed, but it's all for a great cause, and Rotarians support Mercer Island and support causes near and dear to everyone's hearts, cancer, polio prevention, poverty alleviation, all kinds of good stuff. So Rotary meets Tuesdays at the Mercer Island Community Events Center at 12:30 for anyone who's interested, but it's a really great organization with service above self, and the race is a great way to bring everyone together. So someday I'll actually run a 10K.
I could have just said the Mercer Island Rotary, it was, they were called out on the radio for contributions of tiny homes in Seattle, I think they built some. So that was kind of, kind of cool to hear. Yep. Okay. What time and where if people want to show up? Or do you?
I'll let you know.
Okay. So from, from my side, again, just sort of reiterating, I think the theme from earlier tonight, just amazed at the generosity, the community spirit that we're so fortunate to share here on the island. I was at an event last week called Friendship Circle, tremendous Mercer Island showing in support of children with disabilities and pairing them with other children. It was, it was awesome, my first time. At the Jewish Family Services Lunch today, again, remarkable the number of islanders that were there, I believe $1.2 million were raised. And again, these are services that are nondenominational in terms of the communities that they reach, but just a tremendous amount of outreach and a great island showing. Tomorrow morning is the Mountains to Sound Breakfast. Again, I already know there's going to be a number of islanders who are there, Mountains to Sound is a national heritage site, so that'll be extra special, too. The one piece of business that you do have in front of you is, it's called Statement of Mayors. Julie and I attended an event sponsored by Microsoft and Challenge Seattle this morning, where they were outlining their shared initiative in terms of starting to address the affordable housing, particularly on the east side. And so they went into more detail in terms of what some of their, the why behind it, a little bit about the Microsoft funding, what their vision was for the distribution. That being said, when they first announced this, there were nine mayors from the east side that signed on. Subsequently, three additional mayors have signed on. On Wednesday night, the pick will be voting on behalf of Sound Cities as to whether or not SCA should sign on. So the reason this letter is in front of you is we need to be able to give our pick representative, Councilmember Wong, basic direction as to, you know, our support. What I would call out about this letter, and it's out there in many different places, I'm sure if you want to email any of us, we can get it to you, is it essentially says that we will consider opportunities to advance housing affordability in the region, including but not limited to, and then it lists actually several different policy elements. And what I would emphasize is these are not prescriptive, these are not exhaustive, and they are not mandatory. So essentially what we would be doing is generally supporting Sound Cities and supporting municipalities to look at what these tools are and other tools that would help boost basically the supply of affordability, affordable housing, not in the next few years, but the next few years plus arguably decades. So I guess I would ask any council members if they have any concern with Councilmember Wong voting in support of this at the pick. Lisa?
Well, I would have liked a little more notice.
Yeah, we all would have.
But, you know, I, yeah, I do have concerns. I, you know, do not necessarily agree with blanket mandates to increase density near current plan and public transit.
Keep in mind, they're not mandates. They're not mandates.
Yeah, well, then, then what's the point?
It's a, it's a, it's a statement of, and this is, somebody once said, never get in the position of having to defend somebody else's argument, so I'm going to be a little bit tentative here. I think this is a principled statement saying that we recognize affordability as a priority for the region, that local municipalities have a role, that they play in terms of policy, but also respecting that each municipality will need to do its own work to determine if and how that manifests itself, not only in our comp plan, but clearly in our code. So it's, I would say, a sort of a, dare I say, a proclamation-type altitude.
Yeah, I think the SCA makes a, makes a point consistently that every city, basically, every city that's a member of SCA, you know, has local control, and all this is trying to do is, again, as the mayor says, provide more of a, kind of a general statement of support, that this is a, this is a menu of possible strategies that a city might consider adopting, and it's not a mandate. I think that's one thing that the SCA members are very concerned about, they don't like any mandates coming down from anybody. And so this is something, again, is something that every city should take a look at, but again, it's really a matter of supporting what is a regional problem in terms of affordability, so.
And if I can, you, I just want to, you raised a good point about the timing on this. Essentially, I became aware this morning that it was going to be voted on next Wednesday night. Yeah, on the, yeah, next Wednesday, yeah, a week from tomorrow, and this is our only opportunity. So we are sometimes, occasionally, we're putting things out there simply because that's when we're notified, just the same extent to which we addressed or raised and addressed the issue of Vision 2050 with the GMPC. So, well, that's just context.
Sure, and I understand that, but once these things get written down, they, you know, even if they're just principled, they eventually potentially have, they have the potential to evolve into a cudgel that is used against the city as to why aren't you implementing these things, because you've signed on to it, your, your name is on here. And I, you know, in the three minutes that I've had to look at it, I have concerns with at least three or four of these, that I could talk to at greater length, but that I don't feel like the city of Mercer Island is necessarily ready to or should sign on to these, because they start to sound like regional mandates, and you know, really, we want to retain local control.
Yeah, I get a little bit hesitant in that defending somebody else's position, which I'm not trying to do. I would call out, and I'd just call out two examples, if you look at point number two, updating zoning and land use regulations to increase density near current and planned public transit, that's already part of our comp plan, so that is existing within current policy. The second one, point six, providing tax exemptions and credits to incentive low and middle-income housing development, so that manifests itself in terms of the multifamily tax credit that we currently have on the books. Nobody, no developer, has actually taken advantage of it, which I think is an interesting point. So again, just to emphasize here, that these aren't mandates, they are not requirements, they are not exhaustive, and simply that some of them are already consistent with what exists in our various policy statements. But I think at that point, I'm going to step back and, yeah, Salim?
There's only one other piece of information that is on the radar, that, I understood Evan was going to be writing a response for comment, for the comment period for 2050 vision?
He's going to be drafting, yes.
And that's going to go to council, for council to, to view and comment on? I would like to see that statement next to this statement, to see that this is not counter to anything in that statement. And I, because there, you've made a couple of points, you know, two and seven might already be supported by the comp plan, but certainly others of these are not supported by the comp plan.
Correct.
I just don't want to be talking out of both sides of our mouth in terms of the public comment that we offer for the Vision 2050 and this. I think he's very close. So you're saying this is voted by the pick next, next week?
Wednesday, is it?
Well, yeah, they'll, they'll make a recommendation.
So they'll make a recommendation to the SCA board?
Right.
Is that the way it flows?
What I'd be really interested in to know is, you know, there's the content of this, and we're not going to flush that out tonight, it is what it is, none of us came up with it. The SCA thing, like, at the bottom of this letter are mayors that signed on to this for their cities.
In January.
Is SCA going to, like, what's it, how is it going to look? Is it just going to say SCA cities?
Sound Cities Association.
And they're member cities, or what?
On behalf of their 38 cities.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be, I'd be curious to know, like, what, what is the outcome we're asking for on this letter since the content is not being debated?
Well, and honestly, why, why is Wednesday, the 10th, the magic day? I mean, why can't it be voted on another, at the next meeting?
Well, that's, yeah, they meet once a month, so.
Counsel, could you please turn your mic on? Thanks.
They, they meet once a month, and so that's where it's currently scheduled.
Right, well, but, I mean, you know, in fairness, like I said, the letter's got a January 2019 date on it. I have concerns, you know, about, like I said, a number of the points, I don't think we're in a position to be, you know, giving away public properties under point number one. So, you know, maybe it doesn't mean anything because we're not bound, but again, I go back to, well, then what is the point, is just a gesture. And I'm personally, knowing what I know right now, not comfortable.
Wendy, any comment?
Oh my gosh.
Oh, sorry, Bruce.
Well, I support this statement. We live in one of the most expensive housing areas in the region, we have a housing affordability problem, we have a huge homelessness problem. I think we already have a lot of these ideas and concepts in our, in our, in our planning documents, in our regulations, and as well as what we're required to do under GMA and PSRC. So this to me is an aspirational statement, and it's acknowledging the larger context around housing in affordability in our community as well as in the region. This is saying, yes, together collectively, let's figure out how to address homelessness and, and the affordability crisis that we have. Nobody can afford to live within two hours of work who doesn't make $150,000 a year. It's a housing problem, it's a traffic problem, it's an economy problem, it's a jobs problem. Address, naming it as a housing problem is at least a first step in trying to figure out the inequities that so many people in our region are struggling with. So I'm all in on this aspirational statement about what can we all do together to try to fix housing affordability so, so young people have a chance to get started, old people have a chance to, to come down, and, and working families don't need to be traveling four hours a day while their kids are in childcare back at home. We absolutely need to do something about the homelessness crisis and the affordability problem that's rampant in our three-county region. So I support it 100%.
Bruce?
Well, first I want to say, wow, that was a strong, well-articulated statement, I'm impressed, so.
I've been listening.
Yeah, thank you.
How far in advance did you get this?
I, I too.
10 years.
I, I too support this, and I, and what I'll say is, one, we're not, the question before us is not, does Debbie's name go at the bottom of this letter? The question is, do we support SCA as a body saying this is, this is a reasonable thing for the 38 cities to be in favor of? So there's a degree of separation there that, that should, I would think, alleviate some of the concern about exactly, you know, what are we signing up for? The second is that clearly this is aspirational and not dictatorial in its, in what it's saying. The third thing I'd, I'd point out is, and this kind of, it struck me, and I started thinking about it as one of our folks was, citizens was talking tonight during public comments, saying, I'm all in for giving money to YFS, but heck no to giving money to off-island entities doing similar work. And it, it struck me, why are we, why is that the line that one would draw around what we care about and what we don't care about? I mean, should it be north end against south end? Should it be my street against your street? Should it be my county against your county? It doesn't, it doesn't, you know, my country against your country. It's, why have, why is there this distinction that's being drawn that way so passionately? And here, you know, I get painted by some as being an evil regionalist, but the way I look at this is, is we don't stay on this island, we do all sorts of things, like jobs and recreation and shopping and other people coming here that, that are so much more than about our little community, that it is, is awfully myopic of us to, to sort of say, I will only look at what happens here and damn the rest of you. And, and that's where I end up feeling we need to be really conscious of, of what's happening around us and linking ourselves better to what, to, to those around us rather than trying to, to cut ourselves off. So I support this, and not as articulate as Wendy in it, but that's where I am.
All right, I'm going to take a crack at it, I, I too support it. I mean, to me, affordability is a Mercer Island issue. We, I think at least several of us did get a response to an email blast that went out early this morning, and the point there that they made was, one of their concerns, the ability to stay in their housing based on affordability. So whether or not we're talking about having some senior exemptions, et cetera, et cetera, from property tax, there are tools that are outlined here, they are not exhaustive tools, but they're examples of tools that we can look at, that others can look at, that will help ensure that even those who are on Mercer Island right now can stay on Mercer Island, they can maybe stay in their existing homes, or maybe they have alternatives, as they don't need the three, four, five-bedroom home, et cetera. So to me, the affordability question is, is every bit of Mercer Island's challenged as it is the rest of the region? Do I think that we will be able to perhaps address it in the same way as some of the other communities? No, based on our size, based on our demographic, based on our employment base, et cetera, et cetera, but that doesn't mean that we don't have a responsibility and an accountability to be a part of making a region where a teacher doesn't have to live two hours away from his or her job. So what Microsoft put up on the board, and it's up on their website, is they go out to 2030 and they talk about affordability and where the affordability boundaries hit for different levels of median income. And what you see now, and also what you see in 2030, is literally teachers cannot arguably live within two hours of working in the Greater Puget Sound area. My set of values, that's not the kind of region or the kind of city that I want to live in. I don't think we have yet, as an island, had that conversation about what is our role, but the extent to which this is aspirational, and this is an extent that this is acknowledges our need to contribute as part of a region, I'm all in. So, yeah. So counsel, I don't know that we take a formal vote, I think we do do a thumbs up, thumbs down, unless anybody has anything else they want to add.
No, I'm just going to go back to what I said, I, I can't look at this letter in five minutes and then try and compare it to what Evan is going to write as the city's effectively on-record comment on Vision 2050. If I look at this and I think of surplusing public land, upzoning near current planned public transit, which is arguably town center, which we just downzoned, waiving parking requirements, which we just toughened, reducing impact and development-related fees, which we just instituted, and then just increased promoting housing growth and innovation, low-cost development, and we just passed, you know, lead standards and sustainable building standards to try and improve building envelope construction and efficiency.
I get it. Experimental housing, so I'm saying that.
I, I understand there's similarities, but in this list, to me, there are more conflicts with the comp plan than there are similarities. And I'm just going to say, I, the comp plan's aspirational, this is aspirational, I don't want the two things to become in conflict. I think when we see Evan's comments, which are going to be around constraints on infrastructure, constraints on growth, that, you know, I don't want to second-guess this letter, but I think that this and that will not swim well together, so I'm not going to support it.
Okay, well, again, I would reemphasize that this, and this is weird to be in a position of. position of defending a letter I didn't even write. But, but the point is, is this is not meant to be every single one of these. These are examples of, including but not limited to, okay? The other thing is, I would call out, because there may be some questions then about what is this letter, this Vision 2050 letter? So as Julie raised several weeks ago, there's a draft SEIS about Vision 2050. And that is basically articulating three different approaches to determining where the 1.8, or estimated 1.8 million additional people will land, you know, be housed, be employed, et cetera, in 2050. And so they've outlined three different options, PSRC has. And I would call out that there's three different altitudes, that you have to look at these three different options. The first one is, how is growth arguably distributed between the four counties, Pierce, Nahomish, King, and Kitsap? How is growth distributed within the county, so Mercer Island relative to other cities in King County? And how would Mercer Island distribute its growth even within its community? And at least historically to date, we've said actually that it would be around our transit, which was here in the town center. There's been very clear messages said, no further density in the residential neighborhoods. So that letter is something that Evan is drafting. I think several of us feel that it's very important that we be a city of record in terms of that draft SEIS. Evan, Julie, and team will also be laying out for council what the timeline is for additional feedback and comment, because this is essentially the kickoff to what's going to be the comp plan update that the future council, 2022, 2023, will be going through. So this is sort of the, the beginning foundational pieces that are there. Evan and Julie will be sharing a draft of that letter with council, not, not for editing. So let's set the expectation there. But in terms of any, you know, fundamental concerns, additions, subtractions, et cetera. So that will be coming. Comment period closes April 29th, so anticipate it, probably in that mid-April timeframe. But Julie can be more specific. So people are ready for a thumbs up, thumbs down? Yep, Benson?
You know, I don't exactly know if they're going to be asking for thumbs up at the pick, whether or not to accept this letter as is. But I'm just wondering if there is any possibility of suggesting changes. That, you know, I'm trying to address concerns raised by the deputy mayor and by council member and all, that perhaps it could read before these seven items are listed, instead of "we will consider that we will encourage cities to consider opportunities appropriate for themselves to advance housing affordability in the region, including but not limited to." So it's, you know, I get their, I get what you're saying, but I, you know, I, this really is supposed to be a menu that is adopted by a city in accordance to whatever their needs are. So, anyway, I don't know if the pick will allow any changes, but if they...
It's already signed.
If they do allow changes, do I have sort of the okay?
What I would say is, let's take a vote and see if you need to wrestle the language.
Okay, that's fine.
Because I think you got the support you need.
But let me, let me suggest that maybe there are two votes. So you go with, I've got split council, but support for A, and I've got different support for B. Because I think your idea is an interesting one. I'd want to actually write down your language and sort of stare at it for a moment. But, so, because I think that, that might be valuable to, to be able to go in and say, you know, I...
Yeah, again, okay. Because I have no idea what they're going to ask.
Well, how are you going to vote?
Well, the thing is, I mean...
You just do the, do the first vote then.
If I may, I mean, I agree with Saleem that we'd hate to see two aspirational statements, one that's specific to us and one that's general, not playing well together, you know. So, and I think we should wait and to see, until we see what Evan is going to give us. And I don't think it's realistic to say that you could edit this Statement of Mayors, because there's already nine mayors of very relatively large cities signed on, so.
Yeah, and again, I don't know if they're asking for SCA or for the pick to recommend the adoption as is. You're right, then that's not possible. But again, if there's a possibility of suggesting changes to a letter that SCA supports as opposed to the...
I want to make an important clarification. Vision 2050 is not about affordability. Affordability may be an outcome or an indirect, out, an indirect recipient of Vision 2050 direction. Vision 2050 is largely about the principled statements we have with regard to where we want and how we want to distribute growth. Affordability is not the pivot point.
I want to retract my suggestion that we do two, because I think, listening to Lisa and her firmness and where she is, I think it probably doesn't get us anywhere. So I think maybe we just stick with what's here. So I'd suggest, as Saleem said, just a thumbs up, thumbs down on this.
Okay. All right. Thumbs up for having Benson support SCA sign this? I don't know how to say it any better. All right, those opposed? Okay, so it's a thumbs up, go forward based on a four-two vote.
So based on that, should we have you sign on to the letter?
That is an excellent question. Counsel?
Well, that, I think that should be regular business on a different day.
Okay. Bruce, I see you.
I wasn't going there. I, I was comfortable saying, support SCA on this, but actually I think Lisa's right. It's, it's, it's big enough if it's specifically us that we probably want to speak to it with a little bit more forethought. And we'll certainly hear from some citizens on it if it's given, they're given the opportunity.
And I will be clear, that opportunity was presented, and I did not take it for that very reason, feeling that it would warrant some public discussion.
Good choice.
I've, I've, while I, while I generally support it, I feel like this is definitely one where this is for council and the public to weigh in. All right. So with that, I would just call out, the next regular city council meeting is Tuesday, April 16th. And, oh, there's a new line in here. There being no further business to come before council, the time now is 9:23, and the meeting is adjourned.
Can I have, can I?
Oh, I can't.
Yeah, I want to just, Myra anecdote. So I wanted to wrap up with a Myra anecdote. So Myra and I were talking about the senior commission, and there was a senior commission briefly. And Myra was, I'm sure, at least a decade older than anybody who was on the senior commission. And I said, what do you think about having a senior commission? And her comment was, well, maybe when I'm older, I'll think it's a good idea.
And that is a classic way to end. So here's to Myra.